Council meeting for Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Clint, here. Councilmember Manning, here.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer, here.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler, here.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson, here.
Here.
Councilmember Wells, here.
Mayor Cook.
Um, here. Not sure why I was... Alright, uh, first item on our agenda is to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Geisler.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with a couple of slight modifications. We would be moving items six and seven forward from the consent agenda to the proclamations and make a note that items eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, which are the planning cases, sixteen-nine, sixteen-ten, and sixteen-eleven for Gateway Commerce, will be postponed until May seventeenth.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Manning. Any other discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. The very first thing on our agenda this evening is the National Public Works Week proclamation. And should I just read this discussion here, or... It's kinda tooting your own horn if I have you do it, isn't it, Mr. Hammer?
You go for it, Mr. Mayor. There are others from staff here that provide more deserving than myself, so read it for them.
Um, will they be coming forward, or should I read it from here?
Whichever you prefer.
Alright, you know what? Why don't we have everybody come up and I'll just read it out there? Do we have representatives from Public Works that wanna come up? Or do we have representatives from Public Works that don't wanna come up? So why don't we just have you introduce yourselves and then I'll read the proclamation?
I'm Tim Hammer, I'm the...
Steve?
Hello?
I'm Tim Hammer, I'm from the first...
I'm Amanda, I'm from the site in the city.
Alright. Eventually it'll start working.
Corey Tarbison, you take the supervisor.
Um, didn't y'all vote? I'm the engineering intern for the summer.
Ryan Gunderson, Parks and Recreation Coordinator.
Alright. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim the third full week of May as National Public Works Week in the City of Coon Rapids, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, proclaiming this third day of May, 2016. And we have a way for them to get to know the public works a little bit. Don't we have an open house coming up?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. Saturday, May fourteenth, from ten o'clock until noon, right down the road at the public works facility. You can come on in, tour the facility, climb in the equipment, it's good fun for the family, for the kids. I will also mention, Mr. Mayor, that we were notified recently that Coon Rapids has been awarded the National Sustainability Award from the American Public Works Association. We'll be receiving that at their national conference this summer, so it's Amanda and Colleen and all their hard work in the Sustainability Commission as well.
Awesome. Alright, anything else anybody else says ahead?
Saturday, May fourteenth, ten o'clock to noon, right down here on one hundred and eleven.
Is this actually working yet? I don't know. Alright, I'm not sure why I just came back up here again, 'cause I think our next thing is to accept a donation for movies in the park. Which means I have to skip ahead to six. And, um, so we are here to accept a check from the Community Strength Foundation. Are you here to present it, Diane? Is that why you're here?
I'm here representing the foundation, I think Ryan already has the check.
Ryan already has the check. But Diane's here anyway, okay. So, so why don't I... What do you want me to do, Ryan?
I'll just give some information on it.
Okay. Well, I'll just go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the Community Strength Foundation has offered to donate three thousand five hundred dollars to the city to be used toward the two thousand sixteen movie in the park events, and whereas Minnesota statutes allow cities to accept donations of real or personal property by resolution, whereas the City Council finds the offered donation to be of the public interest, and being resolved with the City Council of Coon Rapids that the donation of three thousand five hundred dollars is hereby accepted for the two thousand sixteen movie in the park events, and being further resolved with the City of Coon Rapids hereby extends its gratitude to the Community Strength Foundation for its generosity. And I will give you the mic, since you have the check.
We have John Leggett and Diane Boustaf from the Community Strength Foundation here tonight. Thank you for this donation. This will be our fifth annual Movies in the Park events this year. First one kicks off this summer, Friday, May twenty-seventh. We have the soccer complex, we'll be showing Inside Out with Family Fun, starting at six-thirty in the movie, starting at eight-thirty. The second movie will be in September, on the seventeenth, and that one will be Minions. The donation of thirty-five hundred dollars goes to cover the production cost of having company come out and do this cool screen, thirty-five-foot screen, and the sound and audio. Thank you.
Anything to add?
We're just happy that we can support, that's all. And we thank... For their donations and all their support of the foundation, that's all we do. Thank you.
Oh, you're just here. Is that for real business that you're doing? We need the Lions here. We've got some Coon Rapids Lions here. Why don't you come up? We are, uh, we're going to be accepting a donation, um, you know what, I'll just let you tell them. How's that? Introduce yourselves and then talk about what you brought in.
I'm Lion Beth Janisch, I'm the president of our club this year.
And I'm Lion Lyle Duff.
And on behalf of the Coon Rapids Lions Club, we are donating five hundred dollars towards the, um, teen center. As you know, Lions are very much community-oriented, we believe in our youth, our youth are our foundation, and we're in our future, so we really feel it's an important endeavor to support our youth, and especially the teen center. It's one of those great, um, kind of unknown things in our community, and they need our support.
Oh, no, you said it earlier. I just pointed. I mean, at the teen center, I'd like to thank you for your donation of five hundred dollars. The donation goes toward the teen center, as far as helping with buying supplies, helping with activities to do a number of special events throughout the summer. One is around, for July, we'll be doing a cookout. The other one is we do the night event. Additionally, just some information on the teen center, we're open four days, five days a week. Mondays to Thursdays, we're open after school from three to six, on Friday evenings from six to nine. When we get into the summer, we'll be open Tuesday and Thursday evenings from six to eight, Friday evenings from six to nine. We've had over a hundred different teens come through the center this school year, it's been a great success. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. So we need resolutions to accept those now officially.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Geisler?
I'd like... Can I do it in one, you think?
About two.
Are you on two? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution sixteen... Oh, sorry.
That's fifteen-six.
I went to the wrong one. Six, fifteen fifty-six, accepting the donation for the movies in the park.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson, to accept a thirty-five hundred dollar donation for the Community Strength Foundation to help fund the two movie in the park events for 2016. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Which is a good thing, 'cause I think Ryan's already got the check.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Demmer?
I'd like to recommend that we adopt Resolution number sixteen dash fifty-seven, accepting five hundred dollar donation and extending our gratitude to Coon Rapids Lions Club.
Fifty-three?
No, it's got two different numbers, it's down in the bottom, sixteen fifty-seven. Up in the title, it's fifteen, which is...
So there's a tag.
So is mine?
You're right.
Yours was right.
Sixteen, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, was there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson, to adopt Resolution number sixteen dash fifty-seven, accepting the five hundred dollar donation. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And now we will go back to item two, which is to approve the minutes for our April nineteenth meeting. So... Second. Motion by Manning, second by Wells. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And those minutes are approved. Now we are on to our consent agenda. The first item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution sixteen dash fifty-three, appointing Ellen, and I hope it's Feeling, looks like it, Ellen Feeling, to the Arts Commission, with a term expiring December thirty-first. That was kinda fun, she recently moved to Coon Rapids and wanted to become an involved community member, so we liked that, so welcome. What?
I just wanna point out, and I'm not sure if she's here or not, but I used to teach with somebody by the name of Ellen Feeling in Minneapolis, that showed in junior high. God be the same one, 'cause she was in language arts.
She was an elementary school principal for twenty years.
I haven't seen her in about thirty-five years.
Okay, well, um, the next item on our consent agenda is to approve therapeutic massage enterprise license for Blue Sky Spa LLC, twenty-three ninety-three Coon Rapids Boulevard. And we'll be issuing a therapeutic massage enterprise license to Mr. Zhang for Blue Sky Spa LLC, twenty-three ninety-three Coon Rapids Boulevard, pending a successful background investigation. Next item on our gen... Consent agenda is to adopt Resolution sixteen dash fifty-nine. Um, sorry. Adopt Resolution sixteen dash fifty-nine, continuation of the CDBG Joint Cooperation Agreement and Home Joint Powers Consortium Agreement for program years 2017 through 2019. And this actually includes three different, um, so we're looking at approving continued participation through program year 2019 in the Community Development Block Grant Program through a joint cooperation agreement with Anoka County. Adopt Resolution sixteen fifty... Sixteen dash fifty-nine, authorizing the execution of the Joint Powers Consortium Agreement, and authorizing the Anoka County Housing and Community Development Authority to administer the Home Investment Partnerships Program, and to represent the City of Coon Rapids on the Joint Operating Committee of the Joint Powers Consortium, and to approve continued participation through program year 2019 in the Home Investment Partnerships Program through a joint powers consortium agreement with Anoka, Dakota, Ramsey, and Washington Counties, and the City of Woodbury. And, let's see, now, we're skipping... Oops. So that was five, six, seven, we're moved, okay. And then, uh, we'll be accepting a petition requesting the establishment of the Creek Meadows Two Owners Association Housing Improvement Area. And this is for the Creek Meadows Two Owners Association, consists of forty-four units, and the attached petitions have been signed by owners of twenty-two of those units, and their formant meets the fifty percent requirement. And the association is asking the city to assist in making repairs to the units by financing the project. The city would be repaid through a special assessment against the units. The city has participated in several projects in the past. Acceptance of the petitions does not obligate the city to establish the housing improvement area, and that decision will be made after the public hearing. And we are to... So we've accepted those petitions, and we're ordering a public hearing for May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, at seven PM. And the last item on the consent agenda is to approve the master consulting agreement with BAR Engineering. And we are adding BAR Engineering to the city's consultant pool, and the mayor and appropriate staff will execute such agreement.
Your Honor.
Counselor Manning?
I move adoption of the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Manning, second by Demmer. Discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. I like that. Mr. Hammer was anticipating the next item, I thought, oh, did I miss something you wanted to present on in the consent agenda? We are on item number ten, and you are going to, Mr. Hammer, tell us about the wellhead protection plan amendment. I'll bet.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. The city is required on a ten-year basis to review our wellhead protection plan, look for improvements, and also, um, redelineate our wellheads and check for the vulnerability. Living in the Anoka sand plain, it's... Has its benefits from a structural and construction standpoint, promotes infiltration, which is great. However, infiltration isn't always the greatest thing when you're talking about protecting your groundwater supply. So, uh, we are required through adoption of our wellhead protection plan to have a public informational hearing. What better place than to provoke... Provide a little education here, and then give people the opportunity, if they have questions or comments, to be able to do that. So, just briefly, wellhead protection is just a way to protect our groundwater. We've got, um, it's required under state statutes. Part one is what we're doing today. It's just delineating the areas around our various wellhead locations, around where our source waters are, and supplies them with a few designations, and that's just time of travel for something that might hit the ground, whether it's, um, an illicit discharge that might get into stormwater and into a pond, whether it's, uh, contamination from, you know, changing your oil and dumping it out behind your garage, there are all sorts of, of ways that groundwater is contaminated. So this is just evaluating the space around each of our wells, looking at the different times of travel to get that water down in, to protect. So our last plan was approved in two thousand and six, when we brought two more wells online, so here we are in two thousand and sixteen, trying to get this completed before the fall, and we are more than ahead of schedule to make that happen. So looking back at our old plan, technology wasn't the greatest back then, but out of GIS, here are the blobs. What you see there in green is the wellhead protection area, that is that ten-year time of travel from water that hits the surface of the ground that it could potentially get into those aquifers that we pump our water from. Those are the green circles. Then you go out into the drinking water supply management area, which is a little larger than that, and that gives you a little larger level of protection. It goes based upon, um, natural boundaries, roadways, property lines, so you're kind of taking one area and squaring it off with something to put a little more controls on a larger area. So again, this is done every ten years. We have twenty-four wells currently in the city, thirteen of them primarily service our needs, go through our water treatment plants, we have eleven others that supplement as needed for the spring and summer usage, primarily related to irrigation. We're pumping out of three separate aquifers at various depths.
Well, Mr. Hammer, we assume that everybody's seeing the presentation up there? All we see is your hands, so...
Okay.
So you carry on, as long as they can see it, we've got it here in our...
You've got a fancy report that has a lot of the same information in it, but it's in seventy-some pages of data.
Yeah.
Um...
Two hundred and twenty-four. That's right. We got it here.
Oh, yeah.
We have enough.
Oh, now we got it. That's all we had to do, is just aim it at us and that turned our monitors on, apparently.
So there is a, a large model that is throughout the whole metro area that is used by the Department of Health and sometimes by the PCA. And so what's been done is a little information unique to our area that supplements that model and comes up with two areas. The emergency response area, which is in and adjacent to our wells, that's where it's very critical. It's, it's could be as short as one year from the time something hits the surface till it gets into our water. So those are very critical areas that we protect to higher standards. Then you've got the wellhead protection area, which again is shown on these blobs in red. So now with a little better technology, you can see our wellhead protection area and our drinking water supply management areas have grown. There is, that, some of them would overlap, there are new rules that basically say you need to err on the side of caution and go a little larger. So here is the City of Coon Rapids, we extend into Blaine, we extend across the river into Champlin and Brooklyn Park under the river, and up into and over to the north. So the green circles are those critical one-year time of travels in and around. And when you combine that with kind of the vulnerability assessments, and this is above my scope, and that's why we hire excellent consultants, they get into the permissivity of the soils, the different geological formations, the confining layers, and from that they determine how vulnerable our area is. So when you overload... Overlay those two layers together, you start to find your critical areas of protection. So this is the extent of what part one is, is identifying those areas that contribute to our drinking water supply. Part two comes next, after we conduct this meeting. The plan was adopted and approved by the Department of Health, we just need to check a few more boxes, get our stuff in, then we would move on to part two, and that's where it becomes, now that we know where these are, what do we do about that? And that's where you start to see more public education through newsletters and the website, targeted mailings, identifying, um, significant concerns, or maybe businesses or homeowners that have private wells, or they store lots of chemicals, so just putting more, um, control maybe on some of our stormwater ordinances, some of the other things. So that'll come as part of phase two. Right now, we're here, part one, basically identifying these areas and trying to figure out now, part two is what we do to protect them. So with that, I can certainly stand for questions from the council. Again, it is a public hearing, so we can open it up, and I'll stand for questions there as well. And you did meet Cory, he's our utility supervisor, he's in charge of managing all of this, so give him a little FaceTime tonight, and maybe he can answer a few questions.
Cory knows how to use that word, permissivity, in a sentence. Counsel, any questions? Alright, so should we open the public hearing then?
Please do.
Um, so we are going to... Find that. Alright, we are going to conduct a public hearing for the City of Coon Rapids Wellhead Protection Plan Amendment. I'll open that. Is anybody here to address counsel on the wellhead protection plan amendment? You're not all here for that? Nobody here to... Alright, nobody here to address us for the wellhead protection plan amendment? I will close the public hearing, and... That's... Is that all we have to do? We don't have any motions with this one? Just...
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Very good, and that's done. Our next item on the agenda, under bid openings and contract awards, is to consider Resolution sixteen dash one sub-nine, awarding a contract for MSA street reconstruction, and this is for three streets. Evergreen Boulevard from eighty-fifth Avenue to the cul-de-sac, Ninetieth Avenue from Evergreen Boulevard to Springbrook Drive, and Ninety-third Avenue from Evergreen Boulevard to Coon Rapids Boulevard. And on this one, Park Construction Company was the preferred bidder on that one.
Your Honor.
Counselor Manning?
I move adoption of Resolution number sixteen dash one sub-nine, awarding a contract to Park Construction Company in the amount of four million, thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and two dollars, thirty-six cents.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Johnson. Any discussion on that? Counselor Clint?
I have a question, it's gonna be the same one as the next three items, so I can answer all of that ones. When you, when they go to the budget impact, we have this construction cost for this project, but then we, you go in further to show how the balance of the project costs are gonna be recovered? Was this always from the beginning, how we were gonna get the other... The rest of the money from all these other funds?
Councilmember Clint, mayors, the members of the council, um, this is where we were gonna be bonding against future allotments, so we did do an advance against our state aid, uh, so it's primarily, we're going all in this year on state aid. So a majority of these costs are state aid, reimbursable. There is, um, the Street Reconstruction Fund, which are minor items that are not reimbursable through the state. Some, most of those are related to utility-type features, but, um, yes, this is primarily MSA funding. If there are sanitary sewer items that need to be resolved, we'll do that. Storm sewer items, those are funded through the storm sewer. This one had some sidewalk construction, 'cause we were adding sidewalk to one side of Evergreen. So, uh, primarily MSA is, is our funding source, and assessments are a small portion of that as well.
So, when we talked about the MSA funding that was gonna cover all this, we knew that the different portions of it would come from these different funds?
That's correct. We identified what our, what our total takeout would be from MSA, and that's what we'll bond against.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Counselor Manning?
Just to clarify though, the, the total amount that is going to be funded through MSA, looks like it's going to be a lot less than what was figured from the beginning, just based on these three estimates, our three jobs. If the rest continue to, to be that far under your estimate, then we're going to end up with a lot less bonding this year.
That is correct. We, uh, on these three projects alone, we're approximately, almost two million under what our estimates were. But with that comes a lot of water improvements, 'cause these were the big water, and we've had that discussion here at the last council meeting. So, yes, the, the MSA funding portion is down, which will only help us more in the long run.
Any discussion? Alright, and then, uh, assuming this passes, work can begin in mid-May and be completed at the end of September, 2016, according to this.
That is correct, and anyone within that area will also receive... Weekly updates are available on the website, they'll get a mailing with frequently asked questions, contact information, and that's the same for all of these. As soon as the pre-construction meeting and we zero in on a schedule, we then send that information out, and again, if you check the website, you can sign up for weekly construction meetings, and that's all available on the city website, every Friday.
Excellent. Alright, if there's no other questions or discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Consider Resolution number sixteen dash two sub-nine, awarding contract for MSA street reconstruction, and this is for Mississippi Boulevard from Hanson Boulevard all the way around to Coon Rapids Boulevard. And a low bidder on this one was Forest Lake Contracting.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Geisler?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution sixteen dash two sub-nine, awarding the contract to Forest Lake Contracting in the amount of three million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and one cent.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Any discussion?
Couldn't have rounded it down. This was a point of clarification on this one, Mr. Mayor, counsel, is there's about a thirty-five thousand dollar alternate in here, which are costs that are going to go directly to Anoka Ramsey Community College there. They are requesting a second service into their site to give them better system reliability. Those are solely their costs, and so those will be a pass-through, and that's what that alternate is for.
Okay. Alright, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. That was a surprise reading that, that they only... I was surprised reading that, that they only, it seems like a huge place to only have one water line. Item 13, consider, consider resolution number 16-4-sub-9 awarding contract for MSA street reconstruction, and this is for five different projects, or five different streets, I should say, one project. Egritt Boulevard from Kumquat Street to University Avenue, 113th Avenue from Foley Boulevard to Northdale Boulevard, Dogwood Street from Northdale Boulevard to 115th Avenue, 115th Avenue from Dogwood Street to University Avenue, and Exion or Zeon Street from 114th Avenue to Northdale Boulevard. This one is being awarded to North Valley Incorporated.
Your Honor?
Counselor Manning?
I move adoption of resolution number 16-4-sub-9 awarding a contract to North Valley Inc. in the amount of $3,037,175.19.
Second.
Motion by Manning, second by Johnson. Any discussion?
Just again, as a point of clarification, there is a separate item in here for Dogwood Storm Sewer. That's to assist on the Foley project, which will be coming later this summer. It's a joint project whereby our projects were overlapping, and we're taking the water down to a recently created pond on University, and it may incorporate some work off of the school district's property as well. So it's kind of a three-way joint effort. So that's $606,000. We've got to work out the splits on that, but I think it's pretty much spelled out through the joint powers agreement that I believe the city's contribution is about 80% of that based upon contributing drainage area. So that total 606 isn't going to be all city cost, but approximately 80% would be.
And that is factored into the number that we, that we're looking at, right?
That $3,037,175.19.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda, under old business, is number 14, consider adoption of ordinance 2162 and 2163 to allow chickens. Mr. Cornelius?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Mr. Hammer's got that technology all warmed up already before you know.
Yeah, he should. I'm, I also have a PowerPoint. I'm joined by Kristen DeGrand and Amanda Bednar. So if we could get the PowerPoint up, folks in the back. The computer. So we just have a couple of introductory remarks that we wanted to make and then certainly be available for any questions. We're aware, obviously, that there are a number of people who are here this evening who are interested in this topic, and we thought it would be helpful to just provide a little bit of background, both for the folks who are here as well as for the public that may be watching at home. As many people know, this is really kind of an emerging issue, the, the topic of raising chickens in both urban and suburban settings. There are a number of communities around the country and obviously here in the metro area that have looked at this issue and considered adopting some kind of regulations. In our case here in Coon Rapids, the Sustainability Commission looked at this issue as far back as, I think, November of 2014, and they've had at least four meetings that I could find where they talked about this, this particular topic. As the council is aware, we've had two work session discussions about this topic, so really we feel like there's been at least good direction from council and from other advisory commissions on, on this particular topic. Current city code does not allow chickens, and the proposed ordinance would allow that. There's also a companion ordinance that, if this were to move forward, that would also have to be amended as well. It would be our domestic animal ordinance, which would, currently it prohibits chickens as well, so we'd have to address that as part of this particular proposal this evening. Just a couple of highlights about the ordinance. First of all, there would be a limit on chickens, no more than four. There would be a prohibition against roosters. The coop and run, we would also have very prescriptive standards about, you know, how big those could be. 60 square feet would be the maximum size of both the coop and the run. It would have to be fully enclosed and have netting so that obviously the animals can't get out, nothing can get in. The coop and run would have to be located in the backyard. Would also have to be constructed of appropriate materials. You can either build it or you can, you can purchase these coops prefabricated, but we definitely are concerned about the aesthetics and how these things will, will hold up over time. We'll treat these much like accessory structures, so we've got setbacks that, that people would have to meet if they want to place a coop on their property, and also care and maintenance standards for, for the animals themselves. In terms of kind of the permitting process, we would require a permit as well as a site plan to make sure that it's, it's in the proper location. The ordinance would also allow us to inspect from time to time if there are any issues that come up to make sure that there's compliance. And if we do run into a situation with violations, we would, we would treat those much like we do any other kind of property maintenance or code enforcement issue. We have, you know, the administrative citation process is probably what we would pursue, but we could also treat it as a nuisance as well if, if it got to that. We've got a number of photos here on the bottom of the screen that kind of show the types of things that obviously are not, would not be allowed under this ordinance. So obviously, we're paying attention to the, to the aesthetic piece of this, which is obviously an important issue. So with that, we certainly would be available for, for any questions that you might have.
Mr. Cornelius, I have a question. So it says protective overhead netting to keep chickens separated from other animals, so basically that cover to protect from predators. But then it says the chickens must not be allowed to free range unless the rear yards are completely fenced in. So how often can the, so it seems like that's almost mutually exclusive there.
Yeah, well, there are, it, it would, it would allow for that free range if the fence, if the backyard is fenced, but the run itself would also have to have that protective netting and, and kind of an enclosure. So we would, we would accommodate someone who could let the, you know, let the chickens, I guess, run around in the backyard, but you couldn't, they couldn't run around the rest of the property.
Your Honor?
Counselor Clint?
I had that on my list of things, too. Isn't that kind of counterintuitive?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, excuse me. We want them to have a safe enclosure where they're kept, and we also want it to allow free ranging. That's a big part of it. It's much like letting your dog out when you're not home, if you have an outdoor dog that's in a kennel. When you get home, you let that dog out to play. And so we want it to allow for a similar accommodation for those that have these hens, provided their backyard is completely fenced and it gives them that freedom.
So can they be out all the time then?
I guess, essentially, yes.
Because it, because it seems like then that.
At their own risk.
Within their own risk.
The idea is for new chicken owners to explain that everything wants to have your chicken for dinner.
At night, yes.
Literally everything. So it, it was just a way of making sure that we have a baseline for the standard for the coop and run.
Because like in Crystal, you've got to have a, a four-foot, little, four-foot privacy fence, actually, so you can't see through it if you're going to have chickens in the backyard. So it seems like we're opening it up a little wider, but, okay. Counselor Decker, did you have something?
Nope, I think I got it covered.
Okay.
Your Honor, as long as we're asking questions, because the man that can answer them is out there, can I just ask a few? And this has to do, you know, looking at the ordinance itself. It says chickens shall be defined as domesticated bird that serves as a meat or egg source, but they're not allowed to kill them for the meat. I don't, that's kind of, why is that in there as a meat source?
Counselmember, that's a good question. It, it basically allows the owner, you can't do any processing or slaughtering on your property, but you could raise them for meat and take them somewhere else.
Oh, okay.
Processed, yes.
That makes sense, okay. And then, this is still under the 701 definitions. Number five talks about all waste must be properly disposed of or composted. And then we do talk later about what happens if the chicken dies and removal of it. So can they bury the dead chickens in the yard?
I don't believe so.
Yes, they can.
On the property.
On the property.
Yes.
Okay. And then define properly disposed of. Do we have a list of how they can be? I mean, who determines what's properly disposed of?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Board of Animal Health has established rules for how you must dispose of a deceased bird.
And that, that's part of our thing?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, and then you talked about the coops, the standards, and then it says that you could buy some. Are there ever some that you can buy that wouldn't meet our standards?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, well, they'd have to meet the, the standards that we've prescribed, so they couldn't be any larger than 60 square feet.
But so they couldn't go and buy one and say, well, this is a, and I'm talking more about not size, but what it's made out of. Could they say, well, we bought it, it was advertised as being a chicken coop, but if it didn't meet our standards, could we still say, no, you have to bring it back?
The language in the code talks about architecturally appropriate building materials, so it would have to be either exterior grade siding, metal composite, or shingle roof. So so long as it's made out of one of those, one or more of those materials, it would meet our, meet our.
Okay, so it can't just be advertised as a chicken coop and?
Right.
Okay. I think that's it.
All right, so what we are going to do is no, no public hearing or public comment was required, but given the, I'll just read this. Given the public interest in this ordinance, council will hear some public comments before the matter is considered. This is not a public hearing and is not intended to provide an opportunity for limitless debate on this issue. Council will allow residents to present their questions, comments, or concerns about the ordinance, and will ask that any subsequent speaker not repeat comments or concerns that have already been stated. At the point at which there are no new questions or comments, at council discretion, the council will end the public comment portion and will move into council discussion. The comments should be limited to no more than three minutes per speaker, and if you would join us at the mic and give us your name and address, and we will take public comment.
Hello, I'm Nancy Peterson. I live at 3509-121st Lane in Coon Rapids. My only concern about this is who is going to regulate these people that have these coops in their yard and what they're doing with their birds? If you let them free range in your yard with a fence, how are they, how are they going to stay in there unless you put a fence over that your, say, in the coop has to have? But they can run around in the yard with a fence in yard, but your yard is not fenced over the top. So who is going to do all this regulating of all this is my concern about it, I guess.
And I don't think we're going to do this, an answer as you come up.
Well, I know, I'm just saying.
But the reason the top is there is to prevent other animals from eating the chickens. It's not to keep the chickens from getting out.
But if they're roaming into your yard, how are you going to keep them in your yard? Because they can fly.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, actually, the type of chickens that we're anticipating don't fly very well. If you have a backyard fence that's at least, you know, four to six feet, they will not fly over that.
And then who's going to regulate everyone that's going to have these coops in their yards?
Staff.
Like who's going to be doing it?
Code enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's quite evident with your questions that this is being fast-tracked with the final draft that just came through Friday. There's still a lot of questions that need to be debated, but I have my own opinion on it. So where do I begin on how this ordinance stinks for the city of Coon Rapids? Cost. Let's break down the cost for you. I Googled to find the yearly average cost of owning chickens. $52.50 is the average cost to own four chickens per year. So you're telling me that organic free-range eggs at Cub cost more than the yearly cost to raise four chickens. For the average lifespan of 12 to 14 years would cost a person $52.50. That's the lifespan. If the average cost of organic eggs at Cub or Costco is $3, to come out ahead with raising chickens, you would need to eat over 150 dozen eggs a year. That's 1,800 eggs a year, almost five eggs a day. Plus add to your chicken coop cost the medication you'll be taking for your own cholesterol. This doesn't even factor that the chickens only produce eggs for four to five years out of their 12 to 14-year lifespan, which leads to the next problem. After four to five years, your egg-producing hens are now non-laying hens that are taking up your four hen-chicken quota. So now you're a backyard chicken keeper without any backyard eggs. You can make the decision to cull your birds when they're past their prime for lay, but then the ordinance states that you can't slaughter your chickens. Do you continue feeding and raising the chickens for the next seven years and let them lose, and let them loose like many current chicken cities are dealing with? There are now several chicken rescues in the area dealing with this just problem. That is, unless a chicken doesn't develop a reproductive problem such as cancer from incessant egg laying, add those costs to the average $300 vet costs as medicine for, for chickens is expensive. And to note, I went on the website, the Coon Rapids website, and there's a list of impound facility lists in Coon Rapids State's Hillcrest Animal Hospital. I called them. They don't support chickens. And in fact, the Humane Society told me that there's only one vet that supports chickens, and that's Como Park in St. Paul. While you're at the vet, make sure to get your chickens checked since they're prone to getting parasites. You will inevitably have to battle external parasites. You have to scrub down the coop, spray dust, every crevice, just to keep your birds clean. Parasites can kill your bird, so you have to deal with them by cleaning caked-on poop off their butt feathers. This is going on while rodents are eating your chicken feed. Anyone hungry for eggs yet?
Thank you, Mr. Bjorn.
I wanted to finish that, those that vote for this ordinance, I'll be more than happy to mail you a chicken because that's how they're shipped. You just go on the internet and you mail it. So if you, if you approve this, I'll be happy to mail one to you and you can tell me how it goes.
I just have a few concerns. I'm a little concerned about my property value. We all don't have real big lots. I guess I don't want to look at a chicken coop next to my lot. That's why I didn't go out in the country or go with a little bit of land to live on. And what's going to happen with these chickens in the wintertime? They can't stand our winters probably. And I'm concerned about the smell, and yes, I know dogs, we have to clean up after them. But if they're getting these chickens, not only for the eggs, if they're getting them, these kids think they want them as a pet. You know how they want a dog until they have to take care of it. I'm a little concerned about that aspect of it, too. And other than, like I mentioned, the smell and, you know, and how this is going to be, I think everybody's got enough to do without adding one more thing for somebody in our community to have to do, to have to check on.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ms. Rick Smithson, 2021-127th Avenue. Just a couple of observations. One is that you had made the statement that it was the assumption that people would have certain types of chickens that would not fly. Kind of just seems to me that you might want to put that in the ordinance, that you have to have a certain type of chicken that can't fly, so you don't, and that, that problem goes away, or else that the wings would have to be clipped or something like that. So otherwise, you're going to have, city council's going to have problems. Second problem that I just see as a potential issue for you guys as council and as council and the city government is you may run into some issues with... I'll just use me as an example. I have a, if, let's just say I have a big dog. My big dog eats her chicken. Now, you're going to be in the middle of that. You're going to, it is just, it's just opening a door for you to have that to consider that you will be probably getting some complaints as a city council about somebody's neighborhood wars over somebody's eating somebody's chicken.
Oh, no to keep my chickens away from your dog. I'm Ben Hilton, two-zero-nine-eight, one-hundred-and-twenty-second Avenue Northwest. I'm here on behalf of the three-hundred-and-six members of Bring Chickens to Coon Rapids. And we're just here in support. We just want to thank the council for taking up this very divisive issue, but also thank the Sustainability Commission, who's been working on this for a long time, as well as the city attorney's office. So, we, of course, wish you to support chickens in Coon Rapids. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janet Clowen, two-six-seven-three, one-hundred-and-seventh Avenue Northwest. And I just want to say, when we were looking for properties six years ago, one of the factors was if they allowed backyard chickens. And, and now that a lot of border communities are allowing them, I think with a lot of, if we want to attract a lot of young people to Coon Rapids and make it an attractive place to live, I think allowing or not allowing chickens is going to affect if people move here, if they can move to Blaine or, you know, some of the suburban communities that do allow chickens. Because, like I said, that was one of the factors that we were considering six years ago. So, you know, and as far as, I think chickens are, you know, if you see them as a pet, their pet, I mean, people own dogs, cats for all different kinds of reasons. And I think positives and negatives with each and personal preferences with each. And I think to throw the couple bad eggs out for a lot of the people that want to have them, you know, and enjoy them and take care of them properly, you know, it just seems, you know, I mean, obviously, it might take a little more time and energy to deal with, you know, if there is some problems. But I think the most people that want to have chickens want to be responsible owners and want to, you know, not cause any problems for their neighbors and for the community. Thank you.
Maybe reserve our applause here tonight. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kathy Kelly. I live at eighteen-seventy-four, one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh Lane. And I'm new to this issue. I read about it in the Star Tribune, and I was like, what? So, I'm here because I really don't know what brought this about. And I just want to say, I moved to a city, not a farm. If I wanted to live on a farm, I would have moved to a farm. And I'm concerned about what we expect, how we expect people to raise chickens. I heard the type of chickens we anticipate. And we anticipate people keeping them panned in, or we anticipate this. And you can't regulate that. And so, those of us who live in a house next door to somebody who has a chicken or four of them, will live with whatever behavior that neighbor is going to exhibit. And you can say what you want about writing into the ordinance about how we're going to manage it, monitor it, prosecute it. It takes time, people and funds to do that. And in the meantime, we are living next door to it. We live next door to one abandoned house where they left a freezer full of meat that rotted, and we smelled for weeks and weeks and weeks before anybody in the city did anything about it. So, I'm not really prepared to say I think it's a horrible idea. But it appears, it doesn't appear to me to be a good idea. I'm not sure why we're pursuing it. And I'm waiting to find out what happens when I get a neighbor that wants to raise a goat, or a pig, or a horse. And we say, well, you can have it if you put it in a stall that's this big and it has a net over the top. So, again, Coon Rapids is a city, not farmland. And that's how I prefer to live. And so, my opinion is please vote against it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else here to address council on this issue?
Mayor, council, staff, Jerry Pierce, one-twenty-two-thirty-six Partridge Street, five-five-four-four-eight. Mayor, I think you're wrong saying that there is no, there is not going to be a public hearing. Now, you're putting in a new ordinance. You better go back to your Roberts rules.
Jerry, are you here to talk about chickens or about Roberts rules?
I'm talking about the ordinance, I'm talking. Don't go using up my time. Just listen. Now, you're, you're saying that there's not going to be a public hearing. There has to be a hearing. You're introducing a new ordinance. The big question is for the council. How are the people going to feed the chickens? Nobody's going to answer that, are they?
We don't want to take your time, Mr. Pierce.
You have an ordinance that you cannot feed the birds. You cannot feed the ducks. Now, what, how are you going to feed the chickens? You've got ordinances already there. Answer that. I hope I get an answer at the next meeting. I just think it's, it's up to the whole people. I think on something as important as this, it should go to a referendum. And the whole city has to vote on it, not just a few selected people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Oh, one question. Who do we have on the staff that knows anything about farming, about raising chickens and that? Or are we going to have a big fundraiser to get a consultant in here? How much is that going to cost us?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pierce. Anybody else to address the council here? All right, hearing none. Oh, all right.
I think he's just letting them in.
Good evening, I'm Rick Nager, two-nine-zero-one. One-hundred-and-fifteenth Lane Northwest. And I fully agree with this gentleman's idea of a referendum. I really do. I don't know how this whole chicken thing came about in the first place. To me, it's, in some way, it's humorous. But I just think, I just think it's a horrible idea. It's just begging for trouble. And to me, it's, it's, to me, it's insanity. That's just me, my thought, insanity. But the main, the main thing I'd like to know is, who can guarantee that any regulations in that ordinance are going to be enforced? Can the officials of the city do that? I mean, I'd like to see that happen first. There's enough difficulty enforcing other regulations that are already in place. And, you know, if you guys want to buy some more trouble, I guess this is the way to do it. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else here to address council? All right, that will close the public comment period. Reserve comment to the council. Councilor Demmer?
Okay, so, I think I should just mention a few things that have happened in the past just so everybody can hear it. There was a chicken ordinance that came before Coon Rapids a few years ago, and it was voted down. In that time, many of the neighboring communities have actually allowed chicken ordinances. Which I actually think is kind of a reasonable way to do things, right? It's, sometimes it's nice to be out front of everything else, out in front of everybody else. And a lot of these concerns that are brought up tonight were brought up two years ago, or however many years ago, and is part of the reason that it was voted down. What we found, though, is through quite a lot of research with, we actually have a chicken expert on staff, but also through the Sustainability Commission and some of the other groups, that, quite frankly, the concerns have not materialized in those surrounding communities. Which, you know, yes, you're going to have one or two complaints, just like you're going to have complaints about cats or dogs. And I don't think anyone's considering that we should ban cats or dogs. I also want to really strongly point out that while I do support this, I support that it's written on paper and not on stone. I think it's worth giving people a chance to try it because it's worked in other communities. And if it does not work out, it's absolutely worth it to change it. I think some of the concerns that people have had, I think it's really nice to hear people talk about how much it's going to cost, how much work it's going to be, how difficult it's going to be. Because let's face it, you don't want people coming into something without thinking it through. That said, the conversations I've had with the people, you know, again, I have never had an issue with more than five people email me. I had five people against it and fifty-three for it. It's amazing how many people want chickens. I don't really know how to explain why they want it. You'll have to talk to them. But it's something other communities have been able to deal with. I believe we will be able to deal with it. And if it turns out people don't take it seriously and people do the wrong things and we get a huge number of complaints, we absolutely would modify the ordinance. I think the other thing to recognize is, when we went out, we didn't go to find the craziest ordinance we could write. We had a lot of people in favor and we had a lot of people with strong concerns. So, we tried to write what I think is probably the most conservative ordinance in the area. Right? So, if you take a look at some of the other cities, they let you have six. We let you have four. They let you have bigger coops. We let you have smaller coops. They let you have closer to the neighbor's lot line or farther from the neighbor's lot line. Right? We tried to really make this a compromise. But based on the number of people who are interested and based on the low level of complaints in other cities, it only seemed reasonable to give people a chance to try it. So, that's why I'm supporting it. But again, if there's big problems, we're not saying we're going to support it forever. I also want to say that there are people in the community right now that have chickens. Right? We know that. There's, there's some that do. And I would strongly urge them to come into compliance if this passes because I think that's only fair.
Before we go on, I just wanted to clarify that the council never actually voted on this. It was, it was a workshop and the discussion was, the consensus was, there wasn't enough support to bring it forward, so it stopped. But then, there was an election. And part of the election process at the candidate forums, people kept saying, are you for or against chickens? And everybody that was elected was supportive of chickens in that, in that rollover. So, that was how this ended up coming back up again. Councilor Clinton?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, something brought up, what happens to chickens in the winter? And can somebody answer that? Do they survive in the winter? Do they heat the coops? Because they can't bring them into the garage or house.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, chickens are winter hardy. If properly sheltered.
So, they don't have to heat them or anything like that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then my other questions are kind of all together having to do with the regulation of them. And it's like any ordinances, neighbors can call and complain about this. In the ordinance, I forget what number now it was, but it's defining that if they cause inju, they cannot cause injury or annoyance to neighbors. So, I'm wondering, how many calls constitute an annoyance? We have, you know, other ordinances and people call. And they call us on council saying, you know, I've called ten times or five times and nothing's being done. What constitutes an annoyance? And who makes that decision that this is enough? They lose approval.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Pierce? You know, I think we would, we would handle this much like we handle other types of property complaints. So, if someone were to call us about an issue with a property that has chickens, we would go and investigate it like we do code enforcement or property maintenance kinds of issues. And obviously, have to gather evidence, gather facts, much like we do in other, other situations, and then decide whether or not there's a violation. And if there is, we would then pursue the kinds of remedies that we typically would with a property maintenance case.
So, it would be at the discretion of the department that's overseeing this? I mean, I, I mean, I could call, my neighbors could call, you know, ten times on a barking dog and nothing gets done. I really think if this passes, that there has to be some kind of regulation put in there. And I'm not saying the same person calling ten times, although that is legitimate, too, in my opinion. But there has to be some kind of criteria set in place because it's just so arbitrary. I mean, it might be the whim of, I mean, if we have more than one person going out and regulating this, you know, one person might think five calls is too many. And another person who regulates it and goes out in another part of the city might not think five is too many. I mean, I really think we need to have some kind of clear understanding of what constitutes that because of the number of people, you know, tonight that are fearful of this and are fearful of what they're doing to property values or their, their peace of mind living where they are if they have to... And I'm not saying it's going to happen, that they make noise. But if the people think it is, I mean, I don't think we can be so arbitrary in how we decide what constitutes an annoyance. That's just something to think about. And then also, we haven't talked about the permitting process. And I don't know if we've decided if there's a fee. I want to make sure that the fee for this permit covers our city's costs. Because I don't think that this, because it is such a back-and-forth thing with a number of people, that it should be a taxpayer thing solely that does all this regulating. I want the permit to cover the costs that our staff uses to go out, especially if, in the beginning, I think, it's going to be a lot of regulating, not just the permits coming in, but going out in the city to make sure things are on the up and up. So, I just want to make sure that, that covers the cost.
Mr. Brody, were you pointing at somebody or did you want to make a point?
I just thought, I mean, I just want Mayor and council member Clint. I mean, there are, there are standards within the ordinance. I mean, there, you know, I assume we're going to get complaints about smell. And so, there'll be a source of that smell. Maybe they're not cleaning up their pens or their runs enough. So, we'll address that. Maybe they'll have five chickens or six chickens. They're only supposed to have four. So, there are standards within the ordinance. Maybe there's a chicken that hops the fence. I mean, yeah, I mean, if you, if you run that risk, if you've got a chicken that perhaps can fly a little bit and it flies over the fence, then you're, you're at risk and then you'll be being cited. Either your chicken getting eaten by something else, or it's going to get cited. So, there are, there are standards in there. You're right on the noise one, though. I think we'll have to figure out how we're going to deal with that one. I, maybe Joan can describe better what, if there are potential for noise issues. But I think there already are standards in there. We'll develop some policies of how we're going to enforce the ordinance that's consistent because we want to be consistent when we go out and deal with these problem, with these problems, just like we want to be consistent when we're dealing with exterior storage and other things that code enforcement deals with. Code enforcement's been spending a lot of time educating themselves. They've gone to classes on chickens. They've learned how chickens are raised. They've learned that process because we're educating ourselves as a city and a city staff because we're sort of coming in, this is a new thing as well, just like the council, members of the community. So, I think we're all treating this pretty seriously because we don't want to end up with issues either and having to deal with those issues. At one other point, it slipped my mind.
Well, you brought up a good thing, like smell, for instance. And this is just a scenario. So, if we go out and we document and we find a source of the smell and the people clean it up, okay, and then the smell's gone for a while. And then, say, you know, six months, seven months down the road, it's again, the same thing. I mean, that would be an instance where we would start looking at, okay...
Sure, we've got, we've got a couple of, we've got our administrative citation process, which we've used and we use the same thing in code enforcement. We'd also have excessive consumption if we're out there so many times. The other thing, in terms of the permitting fee, you know, the permit will cover sort of the initial cost. So, that's the intent of the fee, whatever it costs us to investigate, put that fee out there. But if we have further code enforcement, that would be covered under administrative citations, the cost of that. And so, like I said, would be, that system, we have a pretty good system on. Or at least, we have a system that's well-established. we have a system that's well established to sort of deal with, that it's a new code, but we have a system in place that's dealt with sort of these issues before, in terms of code enforcement.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just dovetail off of that point, Mr. Brody and Councilmember Clint, we also incorporated into the violations provision, and this is one of the things that I said at the very beginning when I was running for office, and even as these meetings were happening, that we needed a variety of tools with which to address violations. So there are criminal remedies for violations, making it a misdemeanor punishable by either fine or jailing, or some alternative kind of disposition that could be worked out. There are civil remedies in the violations, so any violation of the entire ordinance could result in civil remedies, there's the administrative process, and there is the loss or revocation of the permitting as well. And I would expect staff, and I'm trying to send a message by saying this, that if we do get repeated violations, that we would be looking at revocation of those licenses. So I think that in any law, you have the issue of how it is enforced, and candidly on this one, I think we've talked rather firmly with staff about how this is one where we want staff to stay on top of it, because of the concerns, and we'll see where it goes. But there was a tremendous amount of effort that was put into the crafting of this ordinance, and providing staff with the tools it needs to be able to enforce these violations. So I am not as concerned about arbitrary enforcement, or arbitrary dealing with the problems, because I do think we have good standards within that ordinance.
Counselor Manning?
Yeah, first of all, I'd just like to clear up a couple of things. I know that a lot of times, there are people that say, "You're not listening to us." What they really mean, "You're not listening to me." There's always two sides to every single issue that comes up, and I can assure everybody here, you know, that the letter to the editor that said, "We're ignoring other things because we're talking about chickens," is not true. The development of Riverwalk has not been held up because of the chicken discussion, so I just wanted to clear that up. Any rate, I was a little bit biased on this when we first started talking about it, because as a wee lad many, many years ago, I lived in southeast Minneapolis, and my neighbors owned chickens, and I really liked the chickens. Any rate, it didn't seem to cause a problem, of course, I was a little kid, so I probably wouldn't have noticed it. My cousins up the block had chickens, and they didn't seem to bother anybody up there Since that time, you know, I've heard a lot of arguments both ways, and the argument against them makes sense. There's a lot of, there's a lot of concern and fears that people have with something new coming in, such as this. But I'd like to go back to something Councilman Demmer said, and that this is not written in stone. If this doesn't work, and it looks like it's creating problems, the council can always revisit it. The history of this, from the other places that I've had it, is there hasn't been a lot of interest. My opinion is people are gonna, at first, get chickens, and then they're gonna find out that they can't go on vacation unless they find somebody to feed them. There's gonna be a lot of things and reasons why they're not gonna want these chickens later on, and my best guess is that within a year or two, there's not gonna be very many people in the city with chickens. And Sherry, I promise you, I will never have chickens.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council?
But at any rate, at this point here, the ordinance that's been written is a very solid It's, is it perfect? Probably not. Will there be some problems? Yeah, maybe, but then we deal with them, just like everything else that comes up. If anybody has a problem with chickens, feel free to, or neighbors with chickens, feel free to call me, and I will make sure that something is done about the problem. And I think everybody else on the council feels the exact same way. But it would be nice to give the people that want a chance to do this, a chance to do it. And so for that reason, you know, even though, like I say, I, the people have passion against it, people are passionate for it, and they probably both have very good arguments, I'm gonna support the resolution, and we're just gonna see how it goes, or the ordinance.
Counselor Gazzar?
Yeah, I think a lot of the things have already been said, and echo a lot of the things that Councilmember Demmer said, you know, my calls were about 64, I had three against. And so, yes, I understand people saying, "You're not listening to your constituents" by voting for this, well, I may not be listening to those three people who had contacted me, because I think the city has done an excellent job looking at, what is the history from the other cities in our surrounding area that have been putting in chicken ordinances? What are the issues? What are the things that have been done? How did we look at the ordinance to correct those things, to try and reduce the risk of issues within our city? And it's something new, it's something, you know, that people may be afraid of, but I think when you look forward, that there are some people who are gonna have chickens, and it is gonna be a lot of work, and it is gonna be money, but it, just because they can go buy eggs at the store, does not mean that they could be deprived of wanting to raise chickens, and having value with that. It would be like saying somebody, "You can't have a garden in your backyard because you can buy carrots at the store." That, to me, it's something that we have crafted, we can address it if it does become an issue, but the overwhelming support that I heard from the constituents is to support the ordinance, and I would be doing that.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Johnson?
You know, I was taking a look before tonight's meeting at the emails that I got, and, you know, I want people to understand, I did get emails against chickens. I, you know, I got about three of them in the last month. I got about 15 to 20 in favor of them saying things like, "Please support chickens," and "Vote yes on the chickens," and all the like. I've had conversations with people, including at the last council meetings, Bjorn and others who are concerned about the problem. I understand those concerns, they're valid concerns. If this does pass tonight, I do want people to reach out to the council if they have any problems. I think the best way to do it, if I can recommend a procedure, is to send an email documenting kind of the problem, and that is, makes it easier for us to pass it on to staff and get immediate attention. I want people to know that I'll be receptive to getting those emails if there are problems that arise, and I would hope that people would do it. I think that it is something that I would like the city to have the opportunity to explore, and so I intend to vote in support of it tonight. That is in response to several things that I said even at the time I was elected, which is if there is a broad support for it, if there is an appropriate ordinance that has appropriate enforceability in it, and penalties in it, and a permitting process, and a process to go through to be permitted, so that it educates people about the ownership of chickens, then it was something I'm willing to consider, but only if there was a broad-based support for it, and it appears, at least from my ward, that there is. And so, that's my view on it, but I'll keep an open mind going forward.
Counselor Wells?
I was the most adamantly opposed to this when it came forward two years ago, and I'll be honest, I didn't get it then, and I don't get it now, having chickens. So you can either say that I'm caving, or I'm compromising, but every question I had was answered. I've talked to other cities, and chickens aren't even an issue. And it's not for me to say what people should do, and ironically, this is perceived as a progressive thing to do, to allow chickens, because of the sustainability and what people want to do. I don't see it that way, I certainly don't think you're saving money, but again, it's not, it's not, it's not my call. There's lots of people that have pets that I would never have at my house, and being a former police chief, I can tell you that, I guarantee you, they'll never be anywhere near the chicken complaints that you get with dogs. And, you know, and we all know that no one's ever gonna change the fact that the city's gonna allow dogs, and barking dogs take up so much of the police department's time, and loose dogs, and, but of course, enforcement's hard, I get that, and it's gonna be hard for chickens, like it is for everything else, because, you know, one neighbor may be a little bit more critical than another. Like I say, I don't, enough of this has been talked about. I don't play the game where I'm gonna vote against it because I know it's gonna pass. Every question I had was answered, and I am gonna compromise and vote on this, and, but like has been said before, it's, it doesn't mean it's gonna last if it doesn't work.
You're not gonna own chickens?
I will not own chickens.
And nor will I. My German short-haired pointer will not tolerate chickens.
Oh. Okay.
Unless you got excess of finger up.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Clinton?
I figured everyone else is weighing in, so I should too, and I'm gonna be voting against this. I don't, despite what everyone says, I don't feel it's in the best interests of the city, so I'm voting no, and everybody can send their complaints to the rest of the council.
Hardier thank yous.
Well, all right, so here's, I think everything has kind of been said. The biggest one is, as Counselor Demmer stated, if this needs tweaks, if there's some issues that come up where there's complaints, and we go out there and we go, "Oh, they're following the rules," well, maybe we need to adjust the rules then, to make, to make it more accommodating. But I'm of a mind that just because I don't like something, it doesn't mean there should be a law against it. I'm not a chicken guy, I'll never have chickens, I don't understand it, but I also sell real estate, and I work all around the area, and this has been a very progressive thing. This does not impact property values if it's done right, and it's, and in fact, it's what the hipsters, and the, you know, and millennials are looking for, is to be able to do this, to raise, they have their gardens, their fresh vegetables, and that's why it's coming out of the Sustainability Commission, because it's the fresh eggs, it's the knowing exactly what's going on. Again, you won't find them in my yard. Just a couple of points that were brought up, and a referendum, it just wouldn't fit in this. You know, we're a representative government, you know, we're hired to make these decisions, and unfortunately, if you don't agree with them, then that's, that's how this works, I'm sorry. The chicken composting, that is, that was a concern, because they are allowed to compost the manure, but we have very specific composting rules that will still have to be followed as to where it can be located in the yard. So I can't imagine it's gonna smell any worse than that rotten grass as it's aging out in the yard, and it should be away from the house, and one of the things that St. Paul and Minneapolis does, that I thought is exciting, or is fun, is they do chicken coop tours. They, it encourages peoples to kind of step up their game, and actually make nice chicken coops in the backyard, and to keep things picked up and nice, and they actually, once a year, have coop tours, where they go around and they visit each other, and they go, "Hey, that was a good idea, and that works, and that doesn't work," and... I would like to make sure we don't have non-flyers. That's a little concerning, if there's some way that we can make sure that we don't have them doing the turkey thing over the fence, I'm not sure. And then, yeah, and then you can feed them, because we're also removing them from, if this passes, from the non-domestic animal ordinance, so you will be able to feed them. So that's good. I don't have anything else. Counselor Demmer?
So before I move the motion here, I do want to thank everyone for coming. It was a great display of civility, even with disagreement, so I know not everyone's on the same side, but people didn't yell at each other, this was the way it's supposed to be. And just so people understand, none of this would have happened if a group hadn't gotten involved, none, nothing at all. So if you want your issues to come before the council, please contact us, you know, this is, this is an example where hundreds of people got together and said that they wanted it, or it was not on our radar at all before that. So I think it's a, you know, there's a lot of people here that brought their kids, I think it's a good example of how it's supposed to work, even if you don't necessarily agree with the outcome. All right, so with that, I would move that we adopt ordinance 2162, Regulating Chickens by Adding Chapter 6-700, and ordinance 2163, Amending to the non, amending the Non-Domestic Animal Ordinance, Chapter 6-500, unless I have to do that, it's two different things.
Do it as two different things.
Two different things, all right. So just ordinance 2162, Regulating Chickens by Adding Chapter 6-700.
Second? Motion by Demmer, second by Manning. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries, with Counselor Clint opposed. Counselor Demmer?
Following up, I would move that we adopt ordinance 2163, Amending the Non-Domestic Animal Ordinance, Chapter 6-500.
Second? Motion by Manning, second by Demmer.
Through the other way around.
Motion by Demmer, second by Manning, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries, Counselor Clint opposed. All right, thank you. And please recall that this is a very complaint-driven system, so if there are issues, please make sure you get the word out so we're aware of it. Got on my pages, mixed up, I wrote so many notes. Where do I have? I skipped way up to 23.
Native plants.
Native planting, there we go. Consider adoption of ordinance 2164, Native Plantings and Landscapes. Ms. Bednar, do you have a presentation for us?
Me too. One. Do I have to do anything to get that? Oh. Okay, so, we are looking at the ordinance to allow native plants, plantings and landscapes, goes along with chickens, kind of on the same timeframe. Again, we've talked about this numerous times, but we'll just go through a little recap. This one, same thing, came from the Sustainability Commission, just the awareness of using native plants and landscapes currently in the city ordinance does not allow for anything, promotes water conservation, improve water quality, and supporting pollinators, which is kind of how the whole thing started, and then grew into this bigger thing that involved a lot more city staff. The commission has talked about it at five meetings, probably more than that. Again, we started with pollinators, talked with city staff, council direction, and have gone to this. Current city code limits turf grass to eight inches in height, and doesn't address alternatives. We've talked with city staff about how that's an issue in the field for them. This proposed ordinance that we are looking at tonight would allow native plants and landscapes in the city. Just some highlights, we've talked about this before, but we added definitions, staff came together, we worked on this a really long time, and we've come to some good definitions that everyone's comfortable with, from the staff level and enforcement. We still maintain the current limit of eight inches for grass, turf grass, and weeds, and then adds exceptions to the code for certain areas, so slope, natural areas, city parks, ponds. So these native landscape planting areas do have setbacks, so the 20 feet and the five feet from this yard's maintenance to industry standards, we have a specific list of plants that would be allowed, control for the soil during the growing part, stuff like that. You've seen these again, but we'll just review, so the top three are ones that would be allowed under the current city ordinance, to maintain with the borders, and then the bottom three would be issues that would still not be allowed within the city, and part of code enforcement in dealing with both of these. City staff's been working on a lot, growing season started yesterday, and so we're ready to get moving forward on this, then. There's other questions? I'll go then.
Counselor Clint?
Could you go back a screen? Can you elaborate on the exceptions?
Yeah, so, when we talked about this, and maybe Kristen can explain better, but there's certain areas in the city currently too, that if it meets these requirements, then they don't fall into this, and it's written out in the code too. So natural areas, if they had turf grass that's mixed in at over eight inches, they don't fall into this, and so they wouldn't have to mow those areas. Conservation easements are the same thing, city parks are kind of similar, that... City parks are kind of similar, that some city parks currently have native planting areas that have these taller areas, so they don't fall into that, what is currently the eight-inch rule.
But I guess I'm still not understanding. Because, yes, like city parks, for instance, we have these native plants, and so why is there, there's not an exception, they're native plants?
Under, yes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Clint, our current code related to tall grass and weeds is about three paragraphs long, it has virtually none of the definitions that we've added in this particular proposed ordinance. So what this would essentially do is, citywide, we would still maintain the eight-inch height limitation, but we would then create exceptions for where you could, where you could have grass or vegetation that would go over eight inches, and those exceptions would include, as Amanda mentioned, you know, any natural areas, any kind of steep slopes. Those are areas that would be exempted under the code. Right now, we, essentially, we don't address it in our current code. We don't, we don't have any regulations that more or less address this particular topic. So we're recognizing or acknowledging that there are already areas in our community that are over eight inches in height, but as a practical matter, there's really no way of enforcing that code in a natural area. So this would specifically exempt those areas out under this, under this code.
So that if you have a hill and you have grass that can be over eight inches?
Well, it would be a steep slope, a very steep slope.
Define steep slope?
Well, greater than a three to one, so I don't know what that, what that is on a percentage basis, but we're talking about a fairly steep embankment.
Like on the side of a highway?
Could be.
So then we're going to allow grasses to grow on the side of the highway where we now mow?
Well, what this, what this is saying, that if we have, if we have steep slopes, they could be exempted under this, under this code.
But see, what I'm getting at though, is that going to say then that we don't have to mow on those steep slopes on the highways? By overpasses, by, you know, entrance and exits off of the freeway?
Are you referring to our own right-of-way, or county or state aid right-of-way?
Yeah.
Well, they're not going to be filing for native plantings, are they?
No, but this isn't native plantings, this is turf grass. This is grass that now we mow, and under this exception, I'm saying we wouldn't have to.
But it still maintains the current limit of eight inches for grass and weeds.
Except on certain areas.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Clint, if I could clarify. Whereas under chickens, we're introducing a whole new ordinance. This was something we're creating from scratch. This is an existing ordinance that's being modified. What we're saying is, you're only allowed to have eight-inch grass and weeds, except for if you meet the definition of a native planting, a rain garden, and you do it in these areas and you do it under these standards, then you are accepted. And so, yes, steep slopes along the side of a highway, those are not planted with native grasses or rainwater gardens, those were turf grasses that were installed, probably a quick, quick take, so you limit the erosion, but it's not a similar type of a permit. We're not, we're not instituting this to go, well, now we can just stop mowing all of our different areas, that's not the intent. The exception is related to the definitions that are in there for a native planting, gardens, infiltration areas. So the exceptions are to allow it, the exceptions are to the previous code that would allow this to occur versus-
Allow what to occur?
The native plantings, as they are defined. So it's not Kentucky bluegrass, it's not any other sort of turf grass. If you wanted to have that exception, you would have to plant native grasses unique to this area, unique to the state. You can't just say, I don't want to mow this area anymore, voila, you are now a native grass. No, you have to come in and say, I am going to do this, I am planting, you know, whether they're purple loofstrife or other types of plantings that would meet that definition, then you are allowed to have that.
Actually, I think that's an invasive.
Yeah.
That tells you what I want.
You don't want that.
It's pretty, though.
Not bad either. So if I'm reading this right, what you're saying is, we have a limit of eight inches for grass. Now we're saying, we have that eight inches, but there's exceptions, and the exceptions are only going to be the steep slopes, these natural areas, you know, everything else that's listed there.
And it has to be the right type of grass that you're instituting. You can't just say, I've got a steep slope over here, it's tough for me to mow, I'm not going to mow it anymore. Okay, fine, if that's the case, then you need to institute a native garden or something else that needs to meet the setbacks, needs to meet the borders, needs to be well-maintained. In that instance, we would go, yes. And when you get to steep slopes, it's kind of a situation we have now, where we're primarily talking about along the banks of the rivers and the streams, where you don't want a lot of removal done, because that just encourages erosion and creates other issues. So when you're, you're talking about steep banks, you're really talking about those natural protected areas and protecting the erosion more so than anything else. It's not, I have a steep slope, I don't like mowing it anymore. If you don't like that, then you come in and you'd say, I'd like to put a native garden, what are your rules? And you'd say, well, here's a plant list that you can utilize, it has to meet these setbacks, and then we work with them and help educate them and the neighbors and others with concerns or who may be confused. So we're not accepting, we're not allowing you to go, well, I'm going to accept this out because I can, and I'm not saying we're going to stop mowing parks because we might fall under this exemption. What I'm saying is, in areas of the park, where you all have said native plantings are a good thing, those will be managed and maintained to the standard. We will continue to mow turf grasses, we'll continue to mow along the edges of trails, we'll continue to mow the ball fields, we'll continue to mow all of those same things, it's only these areas that would be accepted out because they're going to be maintained in a different way.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geisler?
I mean, when I look at some of these things, I go, ooh, that native planting sometimes can actually be a lot more work to put together than others, but they can be very nice and they're healthy for the environment and, you know, having the pollinators and that's a good thing, to make sure that we've got that, and we're working to try and be sustainable. So I would make a motion to adopt ordinance 2164, an ordinance regulating native plants and landscaping, and authorize a summary publication of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Mr. Mayor? Councilor Demmer?
I think this is another one that, you know, this isn't what I'm going to do with my yard, but I've certainly seen a lot of really nice gardens that, you know, would technically be weeds by our current code, and I've seen some completely crazy gardens that you couldn't get rid of because they count as gardens. So I know that this is going to cause a little confusion, especially at first, but I, again, I think the amount of research that went into this, finding these lists from the Department of Agriculture, really clarifies that confusion. And hopefully, everyone who does this looks like the picture with the green checkmark, because those look very nice, and there are gardens like that in the city right now, and the ones in the park look very nice, and I just feel like it's pretty hypocritical of us to allow it in our own parks and then tell someone else, no, 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 that's a nuisance, you can't do it. So again, if this becomes a problem, I have no problem making changes to it, so it's a big investment to turn it all over like that, so to do a good job, or you're going to have to reverse it all aside anyway, so. I can see how it could go wrong, but I'm willing to support it for now.
Mr. Johnson?
You know, I had some concerns about it when the topic first came up, and then I started to think about it a little bit and started to hear from people on it, and in fact, I think the way that we're revising the ordinance will actually set expectations and encourage people to have a more formal kind of native planting, rather than kind of the hit and miss that we've had over time. But really, one of the things that impacted me on this, and I have to say this because it was impactful, and I'm looking at it right now, is an email I got from a nine-year-old who was homeschooled, and her name is Eleanor, I won't put her last name out there live, but she said that, I'm writing this because my new sidewalk by my house doesn't have as many trees or any milkweed like it used to, and then she wrote to encourage us to think about the pollinators and the butterflies and things like that, and it was just truly a wonderful email. It's kind of the kind of email that you hope a nine-year-old would, would write, and it got me to kind of thinking, and we've had numerous conversations about improvement to some of our parks to go along the lines of this, and in fact, one of the parks, we're talking about creating an area that can be kind of a guideline, if you will, or have some recommended kind of plantings in it, and I would encourage staff to continue to think along those lines. So I intend, as I indicated by seconding it, to support the revisions to the ordinance.
Other discussion? Councilor Clint?
Maybe I'm just being too technical in the wording and everything, but is this, this is a new ordinance, and as it states, it's repealing the, the section on weeds is hereby repealed in its entirety. So where in this new chapter does it talk about the eight inches for the weeds or grass? I mean, because technically, are we, are we getting a new ordinance, or are we an exception?
Eight, five oh three, number five.
Is it?
And then all the areas where- That's not allowed, or where the exceptions are, including the right-of-way, adjacent to sidewalks, within a hundred feet of an occupied dwelling, commercial or industrial building.
Okay, I got it. I didn't see the number written out. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Your Honor?
Yes?
Can I just ask, are we going to be publishing this in our newsletter for both these two new ordinances? Are we sending out flyers to everyone, or how are we going to be publicizing this?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Clint, yes, we're going to do, we're already in the process right now on the administrative side of trying to figure out the permitting, more than, the administrative piece of it, there'll be an education piece that we're working on. We included some brochures in your packet on the kinds of informational handouts. I would imagine that cable TV will be another outlet that we'll pursue and release later, so yeah, there'll be all kinds of education that we'll be doing in the months ahead. Next item on the agenda is item sixteen, consider adoption of ordinance 2165 establishing new liquor license fees for micro-distilleries, cocktail rooms, brew pubs, and brewer taprooms. And this was, we're looking at a micro-distillery cocktail room license of seven fifty, micro-distillery off-sale license of three eighty, brew pub off-sale license three eighty, small brewer off-sale license three eighty, and brewer taproom license, seven fifty. Any other thing we needed on that? Councilor Wells?
Move adoption of ordinance 2165 establishing the license fees for micro-distilleries, cocktail rooms, brew pubs, and brewery taprooms.
Second. Motion by Wells, second by Demmer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Next item on our agenda, under new business, is a Hope for Youth request for waiver of fees, and Mr. Stemmottel, or who would like to lay this one out?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This came to our attention a couple of weeks ago, I believe the director of Hope for Youth reached out to a council member and asked about the possibility of, that the city would be willing to consider some sort of waiver of fees for their Hope Place, which will be located at eighty Coon Rapids Boulevard, which sort of spurred a discussion about what would be the most appropriate way to consider that. And after some discussion about that, staff was recommending that, rather than consider a direct waiver of those fees, that the council might consider providing a grant through our lawful gambling proceeds. And so, as you may already know, but for those at home, the city has a five percent tax, and any of the lawful gambling that occurs in the city, comes into the city, ninety percent of which goes to the Community Strength Foundation. The balance that's left, that ten percent, has gone into a city fund that's accumulated a balance of approximately twenty-one thousand dollars over the last several years, and the specific intended purpose and state statute of those funds is to allow cities to contribute things to charitable, things that meet the charitable definition, nonprofits, police and fire safety, sorts of things, and certainly, this sort of grant would fit within that definition. It's an appropriate use of that. Coincidentally, the council did have a discussion about that structure and that balance a few weeks ago, and certainly, there are a number of things we could consider with that. At that time, we talked about a few different things. I think if the council were to consider a grant, I don't know that, I think there'd be enough balance there to both fund something in this regard and do a few things that we talked about, and if I'm recalling correctly, those things were maybe supporting the junior royalty program in terms of some of the functions that we do to help out with their parades in the weekend, continuing the free concerts during the summer and that sort of thing. Well, we don't have specific numbers on those sorts of things, even if the city granted up to the ninety-one hundred dollars, which is the approximate cost of the city-related fees for this project, certainly, there would still be a balance, and that balance continues to grow as those proceeds come in. So that's how we've teed this up for city council. In the resolution, you'll notice, I left the actual dollar amount blank, assuming that council could fill in anywhere from zero to ninety-one hundred dollars, but I'll leave that at your discretion.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Geisler?
I had the opportunity to go and look at Hope for Youth, and I know when we had them come forward to us to look at a site plan, their mission to eradicate homelessness for youth is fantastic, and, and for us to be able to use those charitable gambling funds in a way to support nonprofits that are providing services to the kids in our community who need the help, it's, to me, the right thing to do. And what we had talked about is, how can we do things to support those services that are provided in our community? And I'll put forth a motion to say that we would authorize a grant from the city's balance of these lawful gambling proceeds in the amount of nine thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety cents for Hope for Youth, to help them build their youth center in our city.
Is your motion up to that amount of money? I think if we've recommended-
So up to, or do we need a dollar?
Or did you have a firm, specific number?
Here and council members, yes, we did actually, billing inspections, a billing official, Greg Brady, did generate the figure at what those permits are valued at from the city perspective, and that came out to that ninety-one hundred fourteen dollars and ninety cents.
Yep, that was my understanding.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second discussion. I don't like the precedent. It's a 501(c)(3) in town, we have 501(c)(3)'s doing work on their buildings all the time, and they don't come to us and ask us to rebate their permits. We've got our largest 501(c)(3)'s doing ninety million dollars of work, if they come to us and go, hey, we're a nonprofit, how about a little help with the permits? I don't like the precedent. I like, I think that it's something that we should support, but it needs to be balanced, because we also need to look at supporting Steppingstone, Alexandra House, Family Promise, we have all kinds of 501(c)(3)'s that service our most vulnerable in town or in the area, and I think to, I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with this. I mean, I would support maybe five thousand as a throw-out, but I'm not comfortable with ninety-one hundred, but, Councilor Clint?
I'm going to support this- I, I'm going to support this, because I see it as, as a good precedent, in that it enables us as a council to do something we haven't been able to do in the past, or haven't been willing to do in the past, and that is allowing nonprofits to come forward. We've now been married aware of and recognize the fact that we do have this fund that we can use. And I think this is a, a good way to start, us being able to offer that money out to these, to these nonprofits.
Mr. Mayor?
So I, I, again, I think this is exactly what this money is supposed to be used for. I think the biggest thing I, I worry about is, this is half of it. You know, I, I could, I think I would vote for it if it was half. I, I think I'd be more comfortable voting for it if it was more like a quarter of it, so that we could spread it around a little more. But it, but absolutely, the charitable gambling revenue is a pot of money for this purpose. It's not coming from the taxpayer money. It's, it's coming from the, the work that other groups do. So while I, I think the purpose is right, I think if people wanted to lower it so we had more flexibility, I would support that as well. And I, and again, I don't mean lower it to like 50 bucks. I mean, lower it to more like half the permit fee.
Mr. Stemwell, there's a clarification. How many years did it take us to get to this 21,000? I mean, it's, it's like, it says in here, since 2012, 90% of the charitable gambling revenue collected by the city has been distributed with the Community Strength Foundation. So is this since 2012, or did this start before that?
Mayor and councilmembers, yes, the current balance is from 2012. We get approximately, I think in 2015, we had somewhere around $4,500 was our keep, that 10% of the overall 5% tax that generates. So, yes.
So it's taken us like five years to get to 21,000?
Correct.
Your Honor? Councilman Manning?
Yeah, if this was tax money, I wouldn't be even considering it. But it is gambling, charitable gambling. I too would be more comfortable with a lower amount, because there aren't possibly other places where I want to use this. And I think it shows a commitment. And you're absolutely right. It's a, it's a wonderful cause. There's no doubt about it. And I want to see it succeed. But on the other hand, as the mayor said, there are other, you know, you know, causes that are equally relevant. And, and maybe we need to just not take such a big chunk at this time. So I, I don't know if you're willing to modify their, that motion to a different amount or not, but I would feel more comfortable if you did.
You know, years ago, we, we had, we had one night of a workshop where all these different organizations came in to, to make their pitches. And I would rather see us doing that one-time thing than to having this pot of money and, you know, every month, somebody else is coming in. I think, since we're going to be starting our budget process here shortly, this would be a, a good way of saying, okay, this is this money, we're going to use it for this this year. But then knowing that we have, you know, roughly $5,000 every year, we put that as part of our, not in the budget, but budgeting process, where we set up a time where these projects can come forward and we can discuss it, rather than having them stand in line and coming all the time. And so I, I just see this as being the way of doing it this year, and setting it in motion for us to be doing something every year.
Mayor? You know, I, I look at this as a little bit differently than us just giving money to a 501(c)(3). And part of that is because what Hope for Youth is doing is building something and redeveloping something that was otherwise vacant. And we actually had a very significant meeting on, well, multiple meetings on it, but a very significant council meeting where we heard from Hope for Youth and we discussed these issues. And we encouraged them to invest in this property and to bring this endeavor into the city. And the problem I have with us saying that and then, you know, asking them to pay some $9,100 in fees, is that's coming right out of the money that they would otherwise be putting into the program. And I'm frankly more concerned about the precedent that would be set by us waiving fees. And because there's new development, redevelopment, we're getting something new in the city, I think we all supported it. I think it was a unanimous vote of the council. And it would be coming out of literally the mouths and clothing of the people that are being served in this. I'm comfortable with the 9,100. And so I, I'd like us to stay there. But I think Councilmember Clint proposes a good idea going forward, that perhaps we can have a more organized way of dealing with this money in the future.
That's, that's a clarification. I don't remember us ever saying, please build here. I remember we approved it. We went, that's a reasonable use for that. But I don't remember us ever going, please come and build a shelter in our place and takes, take this building off the tax rolls.
No, but what they came to us with was a vision for what the building would be like and what they wanted to do to redevelop it. And that is something that we blessed, and that's going to require permits.
And, and we approved it, right? I don't, I just don't think it was like a going out and seeking business. Councilwoman Wells?
Your Honor, I think this is a unique situation that they are building in town. And I would be more comfortable, I don't have a problem with a dollar amount. I, I kind of would be more comfortable if it was more of just rounded off, not specifically the, the amount of the permits. But in reality, everybody knows what we're doing. So, you know, I can, I can vote for this. I do think it's unique that they are building here. We have, we've got, you know, and I understand there's a lot of nonprofits that do a lot of great work. But, you know, we can only tackle one thing at a time.
Right.
So, Your Honor?
Councilman?
My question, I guess, is we have a question here as to whether our 9,000 will pass. I want to, I want to be able to allow them-
Well, it seems, it seems like that's probably the consensus. I'll be voting against it, but that's only because it's the amount.
Well, I'd like to see it pass. Only, I'm wondering if it's more of-
Well, if it fails, they can, they can make another motion with another amount. You know, if, if it fails, you can always, somebody can make a motion to, right, Mr. Brody?
Sure. Or does somebody can make a motion now to modify as well?
Yeah, right.
Your Honor?
Councilman Manning?
I want to make a motion to modify.
Can I call the question?
I think the motion has been made.
You, you can call the question, and then we'll have to have a, what, supermajority vote?
Nobody's, nobody's seconded his motion.
I gotta, I gotta get my Roberts rules out. I'm gonna have to give mine out, too.
Nobody's seconded his motion, so I think it would fail because of a lack of a second.
Well, but, but she called the question immediately, so there wasn't an opportunity for a second either.
And I would, in my mind, if a motion's been made, I think there at least has to be an opportunity to second the motion. If there is no second, obviously, that would fail, and then you would just go forward with it.
Well, heck, I'll second it then.
Although, I guess I would want, if we're going to make a motion to modify, I want to know what we're, what the motion is.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, it is unclear.
I didn't mean to create this many problems, but I was just going to see if we could modify the motion to amount of $5,000 instead of the 9,100 stated.
I would second that, but only because I don't know if anyone else has got a motion.
Your Honor?
Just keep the discussion going.
I'm a little confused. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we not vote on that before we vote?
No.
He was asking to amend it.
Amend the motion to, instead of 9,000, some dollars?
Does the motioner have to do that?
No. He's, he's making a motion to modify the motion. So now you'll vote on the motion-
His motion.
His motion, of whether you want to change it to $5,000. If you vote it up, then you'll vote on the, on the first question. If you vote it down, then it'll stay at the original amount, and you'll vote on that one as well. So now the, the question is before the council is whether to change the amount from 9,000 to 5,000.
Now that Councilmember Manning knows he can do this, meetings are going to last a long time.
I'm hoping that we confuse ourselves enough that we won't ever do this.
So keeping in mind that regardless of what happens here, this is not voting on the actual motion. This is just the change in the amount, and the actual vote happens after.
Right. This is strictly voting to see if we can amend the motion to 5,000 rather than the 9,116.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Gaisler?
So, from my perspective, I would have preferred that we would take her up, a down motion on the full amount, and see if we would get support for that. And if there wasn't support, I would be willing to move to 5,000.
All right. I'm withdrawing my motion.
All right, let's draw the second. All right, any other discussion right now? The motion on the table then, since that one's been withdrawn, is, turn this back on again.
Motion is to provide a, authorize a grant from the charitable gambling funds in the amount of $9,114.90 to Hope for Youth. So that's the motion, and Mr. Councilmember Johnson, second.
Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
So, the motion passed with Mayor Cook and, was it you, Councilwoman? Yes, sir. Your voice is going. All right, well, 18, 19, and 20 were postponed to the May 17 meeting. So we are on Agenda Item Number 21, Preliminary Platte Vision 15, 12-lot Townhouse Development, 1,005, Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension, Vision Bank. Kept throwing me off because it's 12 lots, but it's only 11 units. The applicant is proposing to subdivide a 2.26-acre parcel into 11 townhouse lots and a common lot. The applicant has also applied for site plan approval for the townhouse development as part of this project. And access will be through a 24-foot wide private street. Are we good with private streets? Are we happy with those? I thought we were kind of a little discouraged by private streets. We don't have any option with this one, though, right?
Mr. Mayor, they're, they're an option. They're allowed. It's just, we do get requests constantly to take them back. So the way it's being developed, that's, that's not an option in the future, should they request that.
No, no plans of putting a gate in here anywhere?
No, no gates.
All right.
Your Honor?
Councilman Manning?
I move adoption, Plan A case 16-2, to approve the preliminary plat with the three stated conditions.
Motion by Manning, seconded by Demmer. Discussion, Councilmember Clint?
Does this road open up in the back there to Tamarack Street? I'm not clear. Or is this just a one-way in and one-way out?
Second here. Councilmember Clint, Mayor and councilmembers?
That the road back was autumn to the north end of the project, there is an emergency access. It's a 12-foot wide emergency access.
So there will be a gate or something?
Yes, it'll be blocked off.
Okay.
I'll be, it's all going to be, sure. Councilman Demmer?
So I emailed Mr. Harleker earlier, and there's a few stats I thought were important. This is actually the neighborhood I live in, and I thought, just so that people understand what's going into their neighborhood. These are market rate, intended to be market rate. They're slightly larger than the ones just across the street. So there's already townhomes on the other side of the extension. And so that, that makes them larger than the average house in that neighborhood. So it does look like a high-quality product. So I don't think people have to be worried about townhomes coming into their neighborhood. And sometimes multi-unit makes people nervous when they live in a single-family home. Single-family homes are right nearby. But these are actually a product that should compare nicely to the single-family homes, although they will be significantly newer, as most homes in that Woodcrest neighborhood are either from the late 70s, early 80s, or mid 50s. So I, I'm supporting it, and I think it's a good one.
Yeah. Along, is there a fence or considerable amount of burming on the side of the railroad tracks?
Councilmember Clint, Mayor and councilmembers, one of the conditions of the planning commission's approval was that they do put a fence along that property line that, along the railroad right-of-way, a six-foot-high fence.
All right. Other discussion? I think this will be the nicest product, project that's been on that property in a very long time.
I'd also like to put in a plug for fixing up that sidewalk that goes past it.
Yep.
All part of the engineering comments, as well as our plans for next year. And we'll fill you in on that at-
Excellent.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We are up to item 22, consider introduction of an ordinance amending the minimum seating capacity for taprooms and cocktail rooms, and the hours for 3.2 malt liquor on Sunday. And this is just an introduction, but I have a question, because it says, this change would allow Sunday sales to begin at 10:00 a.m. rather than noon. And didn't we move most of it up to 8:00 a.m.?
Mr. Mayor, that was for on-sale. This is for off-sale. This is for like, if you go to-
Super America.
Super America and need to get your 3.2 malt liquor on the way to the lake, you can start at 10:00 versus noon.
Oh.
On the way to church.
And is, and is, and is 10:00 a.m. fairly typical? Because it's like 8:00 a.m. every other day, right?
It's all about Sunday, Mr. Mayor. That's what the law says. And so we're trying to-
So this is conforming to the law?
This is state statute, yes.
Okay, well, perfect.
Chipping away at the blue laws is what we're doing.
Yeah, I see that, yeah. Okay, all right. Well, so this is an introduction, amending the minimum seating capacity for taprooms and cocktail rooms, and the hours for 3.2 malt liquor on Sundays. And we'll consider that introduced then.
Thank you.
Item 23 is Metropolitan Council Governance Reform. And Mr. Stemwell, you want to hit on any highlights from this? This is kind of a follow-up from when Commissioner Schulte visited us, visited us at the last council meeting and talked about reforming Met Council.
Correct, Mayor and Council. Just to be brief on this issue, I guess, there is a coalition of counties that is, been very active this legislative season, requesting cities consider, would they consider their principles for metropolitan governance reform. And there are a number of, of things listed in that. Primarily, they have to do with how Met Council members are appointed, and then who makes up that body, and how those, how the metro cities get, and counties get represented in that. There are a couple of alternatives that I had proposed, or at least included in this resolution, because some of this is a bit of a, a political issue. There are different groups that take different approaches to how this should occur, although I would say a lot of the positions are largely similar. And so what I did was included the Coalition's principles for governance reform, and that's reflected in Resolution Option Number One. Resolution Option Number Two is something that aligns with what the metro cities would consider the best practices for Met Council governance reform. I would say generally, those things align, except for a provision that Met Council members be appointed from current standing elected officials is essentially the piece that the Met Council's position, excuse me, Metro Cities' position leaves out that Coalition's position includes. Then there are other options, such as not taking a form position by writing a letter or taking no action at all.
Your Honor?
Councilman Clint?
I would like to see us write a letter to our legislators indicating that we would like to see some kind of reform concerning the Met Council. And we could state, you know, that we would like alternating terms. We'd like to have more input from the cities, and then wait till a later time when this gets more, more momentum of something actually being done before we make any kind of specific recommendations.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Gaisler?
We need a regional planning board, you know. And there's a lot of good that the Met Council does. There are some things that people don't always agree with. And I think there are some reforms that are needed. I would support what Commissioner Clint said. You know, we need to be looking at having our cities have more input to the members on those board. Having staggered terms will help from a continuity of thought and plans, because when you're doing regional planning, you're looking 20, 30 years out. And when that board changes en masse, you lose that continuity and have to restart. And so I think how, having our position put forward, that we want to be more involved in those appointments, and the staggered- in those appointments, and the staggered terms, and looking at some reform is probably the right way to go for now.
Any thoughts on this? So, Councilwoman Clinton, was there, was there one of the models, one of the four, that you thought kind of aligned with your thoughts?
I think there's bits and pieces of each one of them, and that's why I think at this point, a general statement of needing reform lets our legislators know that we're in support of some kind of reform. I don't know anything that could get done this year anyways, so at least this gives our idea of where we are and lets them know that we want to work with them as we go forward.
Well, if we're going to be supporting writing a letter, that really isn't anything that we would need to motion on, then, because we wouldn't be, we wouldn't have a letter until later anyway, then. So are we kicking the can down the road effectively?
Yeah.
Mr. Stemwell.
Mayor and Council, if Council is feeling that that might be an appropriate direction, what we could do, what other, some other cities have done, is staff could write a letter that includes some of those components and leave that option to the individual council member, whether or not they want to sign on to that letter as being in support of. Doesn't make it an official policy of the city or action by the city, but certainly indicates what this council's support might be, as far as that goes. And certainly, we would not have to bring that sort of thing back to the council members. I would just simply route that to each of you, and you could make your choice at that time.
Mr. Mayor. I just think that makes us look weak on the issue, and when I look through the principles for metropolitan council reform, and when I consider some of the interactions that the North Metro in particular has had with the Metropolitan Council, or should I say, lack of interaction that the North Metro has had, I do support reform in a rather hearty and strong way. And candidly, I am all right with signing on to the local government coalition principles for metropolitan council reform, with the understanding that these are principles, they're not the legislation, and we could weigh in at a later point in time on the legislation. I also think I could be supportive of somewhat of a lesser approach, where we support a significant number of the principles, and express support for the Coalition's efforts to get the matter started with the legislature, and then weigh in on specifics at a later point in time. But I'd rather not pursue the route if there can be some consensus that we can reach on the council of just having individual council members send letters to the governor and the legislature. So if it requires us to table this and work through some of those issues, I think we ought to consider doing it.
Because I can work with this as well, I just, but I would like to see a little modification, because I don't, I don't like the hard directive that it shall be elected officials appointed from cities and counties within the region, because I don't need another board to sit on, you know?
Right.
So I would, I would, but I would like to see us have influence who is appointed.
We might want to designate somebody who is a non-elected official, but yet a good representative for our region.
Right.
And I'm agreeable to that.
So from my perspective, you know, the Coalition principles, I think, you know, one, four, five, and six, I would generally support two and three, which talk about how people are appointed and the types of people seems to be a little county-heavy to me versus city-heavy, and the cities are really more where the Met Council focuses a lot of the regulations, where we're talking about the system statements and whatnot.
Planning and zoning.
It is planning and zoning, it's a regional planning board. And you, I mean, I sat on Planning Commission for 12 years, and it's, it's a learning curve. Regional planning is not easy, and it's, you don't want somebody in there who has no idea what a zoning map is, or how those things work. So just because you're elected doesn't mean necessarily that you're fully versed in some of those types of things. So to me, I think the cities need to be able to help guide who's there to ensure that they are a voice for them. And so that's where I didn't like the Coalition's principles. I would be supportive of the metro cities' position, because that is more inclusive with how local representatives would be put onto that board.
Councilwoman Clinton.
I want to make a motion that we table this to a future date and have perhaps staff come back with maybe a letter that can come relate for us, and then we can, as a starting point, and then we can tweak it as we go along. I just don't think a discussion tonight's going to get us anywhere.
Your Honor. Councilwoman Wells.
I am fully willing to support Option Two, because it's a starting point. It's pretty generic, and I see no reason. It's going to be tweaked down the road, we all know that.
Yep.
But I don't see why we need to keep putting this off. We're making a statement that we think there needs to be changes. I think Option Two is generic enough to do that, and I would certainly be willing to vote on that tonight.
Your Honor.
Councilman Manning.
I agree with Councilwoman Wells, and I'm willing to vote on Option Two.
Councilwoman Clinton, I think your tabling failed without a second, so...
Well, then we're in for a big discussion, because I want to have a discussion about this. I, I just, there's parts of each one, what, which...
Well, so Option Two...
Under what, discussion or recommendation?
Under, adopt Resolution Sixteen-Dash-Sixty, which is Option Two, which is an alternate, alternative resolution that aligns with Metro Cities' position on metropolitan council governance reform.
And is that what we saw in the workshop? I mean, in the...
Mr. Stemwell.
Workshop agenda?
So, Councilmember Clinton, Mayor and Council, so this resolution was what we discussed in work session. The three principles that are included there under, be it further resolved, under Option Number Two, I sort of characterize them as metro cities' principles. Certainly, these three are included in some of the county coalition's principles for reform and others, such as the Citizens League's statement on metropolitan governance reform, excuse me. So essentially, what that's saying there is that local government should have a bigger decision-making role in who gets appointed to the Metropolitan Council, that in order to achieve some sort of level of stability, that the terms should be staggered, and that there be some geographic representation. So I think those are three points that multiple jurisdictions have supported when it comes to governance reform. What this does not include, which is included in the Coalition's, is generally this piece that current standing elected officials from counties and cities be appointed themselves to the Metropolitan Council, which I think has been the point that's hung up some councils across the metro, or has caused the most discussion. And so what this particular resolution does is say, "We agree that there is some reform that's needed. We agree that staggered terms is probably a better route to go, and that we still need to maintain some geographic representation across the metro region that Met Council represents." So in essence, it's a watered-down version, I guess you could say, of what the Coalition's supporting, though it does, I think, make some statement that, one, the city believes the Metropolitan Council is an important body themselves, but, two, that there needs to be a different approach to how those members get appointed.
So, so if I may, Resolution Sixteen-Dash-Sixty, second alternative, the resolution supporting principles for reform of the Metropolitan Council, I'll skip over the "whereas's," but "regional planning and local government cooperation is vital to the continued success of the Minneapolis-St. Paul metropolitan area, and the Metropolitan Council is by statute the regional planning agency for the Minneapolis-St. Paul metropolitan area, with broad authority, including the ability to levy taxes, change fees, charge fees, and set regional policy, and cities and counties are directly affected by policies and financial decisions of the Met Council, making them primary constituents of the Met Council. And the City of Coon Rapids has a longstanding relationship with the Met Council on comprehensive planning, housing policy, housing projects, and transportation projects. And whereas a governmental entity with taxing authority must be responsible, responsive, and accountable to those it represents. And the appointment of Met Council members resides solely with the governor. And whereas many cities and counties believe that the authority to impose taxes and set regional policy should include local government elected officials." Now, so Alternative Two has the, should include local government elected officials.
Doesn't say elected.
Pardon?
Doesn't say...
Well, it does two things that concern me, and they're the two, last two "whereas" clauses that you read, but the first one of those is "whereas the appointment of the Metropolitan Council members resides solely with the governor." And, and so I don't see that this is proposing a change from the governor appoints everybody, and it's an acknowledgement that the governor retains that authority, and that's what concerns me about this. And when you go back out of this and into the metro cities' task force on metropolitan governance, and you go to page, what troubles me is page, gosh, it'd be nice if they put page numbers on these. It looks like about page four or five from their recommendation. It says, "Continued, the task force recommends legislative policies that emphasize the following tenets: Continued support for Metropolitan Council members' selection through appointment by the governor." And that's what I think we're trying to get away from here, and that's why I'm concerned about this second option.
Councilor Demmer.
So in the, assuming I'm reading correctly here, in the, "Be it further resolved," the first item says that "in order to recognize the responsibility that the Metropolitan Council has to local units of government, local government shall have a decision role in the appointment process for representatives to the Metropolitan Council." So in the actual resolution, it doesn't say solely appointed by the governor. In the actual resolution, it says have a role, and I don't know exactly what that means, other than it's saying that we want a role.
So I quit reading too early. "Be it further resolved that the City of Coon Rapids supports consideration of the following principles if reform of the Metropolitan Council is considered. One, that in order to recognize the responsibility that the Metropolitan Council has to local units of government, local government shall have a decision role in the appointment process for representatives to the Metropolitan Council. And, two, that in order to promote the stability and continuity of governance, the terms of office for Metropolitan Council members shall be staggered. And, three, that in order to promote equitable regional representation, membership on the Metropolitan Council shall continue to include a balanced geographic, geographic representation from all areas of the metropolitan region." Well, that's why I said that I liked that earlier. Apparently, I read it all the first time.
Yeah, because the "whereas" kind of set the stage for how it is.
Yep, yep.
Not when you read it in context with the recommendations of the task force, and that's what is going to be seized on here. I, I can't emphasize enough that just because it says we should have a role in the process, we are ceding and leaving entirely with the governor the exclusive appointment authority, when that is what the county coalition was trying to get away from.
Well, "be it further resolved," local governments shall have a decision role in the appointment process.
Right.
But, so that's just...
We'd rather have somebody else, but it's your decision, Governor. I mean, you know, we have input, but no authority, and that's my concern.
Your Honor.
Councilman Manning, can we, can we eliminate any of these "whereas's"?
I'm just wondering if we can eliminate the one about the governor appointing. I understand where you're coming from on that, if there could be some confusion on it. I mean, they should be reading, basically, that, in my opinion, it should, their interpretation should be that the governor no longer has sole power to appoint, but I can understand where they may be confused on it.
Councilman Manning, just one second. Mr. Stemwell, which one of these is Ramsey's? Because Ramsey's took the Anoka County one and modified it slightly.
It's Sixteen-Sixty, Option Two, the one we're talking about.
Oh, that is?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And maybe to address Councilmember Johnson, so if you look at, under the further resolve, Point One, and if you change, the local government shall have a decision role, and maybe it should have, shall have final decision role, and you change the word from "a" to "final," so, and how that works, it's not ours to necessarily decide right here, because, you know, but the governor could maybe say, here are my nominees, say yea or nay, you know? Who knows how that would actually work, but if you wanted to ensure that the local government had that final authority, just change the one here.
Mr. Stemwell. Oh, I'm sorry.
Does that mean that every city council, the metro area would be voting on all that?
Potentially.
No. Yeah, I mean, this is, again, this is like a statement of principles.
Yes.
So, you know, but I, you know, I think it could even be further simplified by changing the "whereas" clause, and I hate the computer, because sometimes it ruins my page, changing the "whereas" clause to "whereas the appointment of the Metropolitan Council members shall no longer exclusively reside with the governor. And be it further resolved that in order to recognize the responsibility that the Metropolitan Council has to local units of government, local units of government shall decide the appointment of process for representatives to the Metropolitan Council." I'd be all right with that, but I'm pretty sure that the governor won't be.
Councilor Demmer.
So further for the people watching at home in here. So when I read the "whereas's," that's not a statement of we like it, that's a statement of the current situation. If people are worried that it makes it sound like we do approve of it, it could certainly change to say currently reside solely with the governor, or reside solely with the governor despite the wants of the community. I don't see it as an option or as an issue, because it's in the "whereas's," and the "whereas's" are pretty much just fluff. It's really just the resolve that says which principles you support.
See, but we just discussed how this was the recommended metro cities' position.
This is, no, this is the one that, from Anoka County, as modified by the City of Ramsey.
To match closer to...
Mr. Stemwell.
So we can modify it if you...
I would characterize it as being metro cities-friendly. It aligns with their principles of the task force that they include, and that, and that piece is the, be it further resolved, and the principles of all after that. The "whereas," I would agree, is sort of setting the context, or the facts of today. The fact of today is that the governor is the sole authority. I think where, what this is saying, we could strengthen it if that's the council's direction here, to say that we disagree that the council should have final sole authority over who gets appointed to the Metropolitan Council, somewhere in that first provision or otherwise.
And here's the reality. They're going to look at this from 10,000 feet, they're not going to read every one of our proclamations, they're going to look at how many cities go, we need some reform, we need some reform, and then they'll make the sausage down there. So I guess I would just as soon agree to this one, it's as good as anything, and kick it down to the legislature and let them deal with it, because they're not going to micro, they're not going to create legislation based on our proclamation, other than reform. Was there a motion?
I'll make one.
Go ahead.
All right. Let's see, I move to adopt Resolution Sixteen-Dash-Sixty, Option Two, which is an alternative, as we've read in full.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, seconded by Gaiser. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Councilor Johnson opposed. All right. Let's bring this back up to open mic. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant, relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the City of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the question. name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council as a whole. Personal attacks are prohibited. Open mic is not a time for problem solving or reacting to the comments made, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes only. Questions from council will be for clarification only. If necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forwarded to the speaker. Who's here for open mic this evening? Do you have an address, please?
Yep, I have, do I do my homework business? God, I'm nervous now. And I'm not quiet, so. I have an address at twenty six oh five Coon Rapids Boulevard, in the Mood Hair Salon, in a building with Chet Shoes, you're all familiar with that. I've been there for about eleven years. We have a tree, a pine tree next to us, that is blocking our signage. We have cars slamming on the brakes, backing up, pulling in. I need somebody, all of you, to come look at the tree. I've talked to the gentleman next door. He's asked me to hit the road. He's a lawyer, and I know you're all probably familiar with him. So if you all could go look at it, and then I'll call you all and see what we can do about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Thank you. I'm far more familiar with the tree than the lawyer. I don't know him at all, but I've looked at that tree a lot. And when you drive over there to look at the tree, we still need a sidewalk to connect from their parking lot to the bus depot, or the bus stop there. So, yes, okay. Thanks, Mary. Anybody else here for open mic? All right, here are none. We'll close that portion. Stop that, so it doesn't start beeping at me. Open mic reports. And there we go. Open mic report, Ms. Jennifer Cook, twenty twenty one hundred and twenty-seventh Avenue, and Mr. Jerry Pierce, one twenty-two thirty-six Park Ridge Street, address the council concerning, concerning establishing and managing a flea market on city-owned property along Coon Rapids Boulevard between Egrid and Avaset, commonly referred to as Port Riverwalk. This was predicated, or precipitated, or started based on an email that she said she read from me, and it was a little out of context. The email I received was, Mr. Mayor, I feel compelled to contact you again. Last summer, I contacted you about having a flea market on the vast barren of wasteland that we, the taxpayers, own on Coon Rapids Boulevard. And I responded, are you suggesting that you, or maybe your organization, I won't say which one, is interested in hosting a flea market on that parcel until such time as construction starts? It was a question. But apparently, that started this. So, the issue of allowing a flea market at Port Riverwalk touches on a couple of practical and policy-oriented concerns. From a practical standpoint, the Riverwalk site currently has no supportive infrastructure for such an event. For example, there are no buildings on the property with any bathrooms, garbage, recycling receptacles, or electrical outlets. Presumably, these sorts of things would have to be brought to the site and managed during an event. And while, while a private group might be capable of organizing a flea market, it is very likely that the city would have some level of oversight and responsibility. And it's important to note that there's an approved master plan for Port Riverwalk, which does not include or anticipate a flea market or secondhand dealer within the district. From a regulatory standpoint, staff would need to consider how to handle licensing and zoning elements. For example, staff determined that flea markets are not specifically named as being allowed, but it could be argued that flea markets could be categorized as a secondhand dealer. Secondhand dealers are only allowed in neighborhood commercial, community commercial, general commercial, or office zoning district. The Riverwalk and Coon Rapids Ice Center properties are zoned port, and secondhand dealer operations would not be allowed to be licensed on these properties. And then it was, and then, of course, the proposal was, we were asked to, Jennifer Cook is the coordinator of the flea market, and that the property in Coon Rapids Boulevard between Egrid and Avaset has liability insurance. All proceeds from this project are to be kept by Jennifer Cook, and then porta potties would be furnished by the city. And so it didn't really seem like a win-win for us, or any revenue there, so. She would, she would have received a letter that we're not pursuing that. That's all, it's one of the reports I've got from open mic. The, the other one had a bit of a salacious sound to it, that I had written something on social media that was inappropriate, and I would just ask that if anybody's interested in reading it, you go to the chickens' website, you'll see it there. I just, I'll, I'll just say what it was. So they had, there's a, well, there's a Facebook page called Bring Chickens to Coon Rapids. And I, every once in a while, click in there to see what's going on. And I didn't friend it, I didn't like it, but I noticed that they had posted that at the next meeting, April nineteenth, that, that was going to be, let's see, I can't find the language. But it was their, they were encouraging everybody to show up at the April nineteenth meeting to voice their opinion, and I just let them know that it was just an introduction, and there would not be an opportunity to, to speak at that meeting, and that was, an issue was taken with that letter. But, anyway, nothing salacious. I like Mr. Brody at the end of it, when you're going, you were hoping it wasn't bad, because it sounded bad in the description. I don't, we don't have any other business on the agenda here. Other business. Mr. Man, Counselor Manning.
Just want to remind you that the, those ornaments along Riverdale, there on Main Street, still, I don't know if anybody's checked on those yet or not, but there's some rust on them, and it's, some of them, it looks kind of tacky. And I, I think, you know, some touching up, or something needs to be done with them before it gets any worse. So I, I had mentioned it on, a couple months ago, and I don't know if anybody's been out there to take a look at it, but it needs to have some attention.
Are those ours, or do those belong to the mall? Those are ours?
We used to have signs on.
Other business? Counselor, please.
I'm just wondering if we can get an update. I've had people asking when the Foley project is going to be started, like as far as digging up the road and everything.
Counselor Member Clint, members of the council, I believe it was just authorized by their board at their last meeting to approve the joint powers agreement and go for bids. So I believe they're currently out for bid now. It's their intent to work from Egrid Boulevard to the north to approximately one hundred and thirteenth, and get all of the water main replacement, all of that work done this construction season, and then go to the intersection and those improvements in twenty seventeen.
And that was different from what was represented at the time we signed the joint powers agreement?
Yes, back in September, I believe, of last year, it was the intent to try to get everything done such that they could move on to their acquisitions and get their approvals through the winter, so they'd be able to bid it in the spring and get it done in one construction season. I can't speak to the acquisitions, how that's gone, but I do know they just received watershed approval last week, and there were some issues that came up with regard to our wellhead protection areas and their stormwater system. So that delayed the project quite a bit, and ended up basically having to redo that whole storm design, and that's why we ended up with part of it in our construction project. So I, I think some factors changed throughout the course of that design that made it a longer timeline, and to try to tackle it all in one season and get caught with your pants down probably isn't the way they want to undertake it. So they're trying to be cautious of opening up the intersection and maybe allowing that work to take place in the following year.
Is there going to be added expense as a result of the redesign that the city might have to share in?
Well, it's all going to be contained within the existing bid. And so that bid is going to have the timeline to completion, so it's not going to be two separate bids. So whatever the numbers come in at with this award, that wouldn't be extended beyond. However, could there be ramifications for an extended construction cycle? Potentially. Some contractors might look at that as a negative, others might see it as a positive, to say, I've already got a job out of the chute for next spring, and I maybe don't have to hit the bidding environment so hard. So it, it all depends on.
More specifically, and I don't mean to interrupt, but to the stormwater management plan as a result of that, there, are we going from ponding to storm sewer, or something else?
Yes, that's correct, Counselor Member Johnson. There was a pond developed as part of the university project that was expanded down behind the mini storage. That's where all of this is, is headed now. So the county has now not had to acquire certain properties to do their ponding. It wouldn't have been allowed. They couldn't have done infiltration in the areas that they were proposing. So it is still going to be ponded, it's still going to meet all the rate and discharge, it's just going to a different location, which adds cost to pipe it that far. Yes.
Quarter of a mile away?
That is correct. It's, it's contained within the sub, same sub watershed. So the north end of that project is already directed in that general direction. That's what was modeled to develop that pond in the first place.
All right.
Another question?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Along the same lines, the stuff that's happening out of Northdale in front of Sand Creek Park, people are asking about what's going on there. I just thought an update might be helpful.
That's project number two, Counselor Member Clint, with, with regard to Sand Creek Park. It's signalization of Redwood, it's moving the access point into Sand Creek Park, it's adding a sidewalk along the north side, full pedestrian crossing access there. It's a city project that the county is participating in. And with that project and all others, it's on the county's website, in their weekly construction bulletin, as well as it's in the cities. So every Friday, you could, you could sign on and get weekly updates emailed directly to you, or you could just sign into the city website, probably midday Friday, or towards the end of the day Friday, and, and it'll give you a snapshot of what occurred this week and what's anticipated to occur the following week. That project just started about a week ago, and it's due to be completed right around mid-July.
Mr. Hammer, on that Sand Creek project, is there any more, for lack of another word, barriers that we should be looking at? Because when you drive by there, it looks like an open, I mean, it looks like a park that's ready to go, other than you can't drive in there. I'm just wondering if the, is it okay if the kids start playing on the grass? I thought we were kind of trying to get that to grow in there good. And it doesn't seem like there's any prohibition for them, to keep them from using it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I can say, we're not programming it. We've had some conversations with the Little League as far as limiting or not allowing their teams to go over and start practicing. We've had requests to utilize it. Are we out there actively patrolling, you know, a pickup football game on a weekend? No, we're not. But any activity we see, we would discourage that. I think the park patrol have been elevated with their rounds through those areas. The trail system to get you through is now complete. You can get from the north end through, along the railroad tracks on the west side. And parking is being utilized for the Little League, and all access now is coming in off of the south end. So there is activity occurring in there, primarily parking at this point, and, and some recreational walking for people. I haven't seen anyone. I've, I've had a few pictures sent to me about a few, you know, pickup football games for, for some kids, but not to the extent that I had really thought it might occur. But we just keep our eyes out for it.
Because we, we have the nice banner up on the ball fields, you know, little programming will be start, starting in twenty seventeen or something, and I don't know if there's anything that we should be thinking about adding to the other, to the east side or not.
There is one on the south side as well. There is no access from the east side anymore. The Little League used to have a parking lot off of that side. They've now converted that to another T-ball field, so that access point on Quinn Street is now gone. That will be converted to a trail at some point in the future, at the end of this project. But there is a smaller banner on the south end, as you access as well, off of one hundred and thirteenth, I believe it is, that says the same thing, spring of twenty seventeen.
All right, very good. Your Honor. Counselor.
On the same topic, I was, that opening day for Little League, and it was unbelievable how packed the parking lots were with just the Little League. It kind of makes you wonder, when there's a softball tournament going on, what's going to happen? But I was told by somebody that lives over there that the kids play football on it all the time, and of course, when I was there, there was about, you know, a dozen to twenty kids playing football, and I, I don't know quite how you're going to stop kids from having a pickup football game on the nicest field in the city.
It's not quite there yet. It looks really nice, but when you walk on it, it's not really there. So discouraging the cleats and that sort of activity. If you get a little pickup game on a weekend, it's probably not going to do the type of damage that prolonged significant repeated action would have.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick things. We're bumping up against it right now, but at ten PM tonight, Bill Hudson on WCCO TV, Channel Four, will be doing a story on the value of wireless interconnected smoke detectors and residential fire sprinkler systems. And the end of the story will highlight a townhouse fire that occurred in Coon Rapids on April fifteenth, where a working smoke detector saved the life of the occupant by giving her an early notification of the fire. And then Fire Marshal Todd Williams and other Coon Rapids firefighters, along with Jamie Novak from St. Paul Fire, did the story with WCCO using a house located in Coon Rapids at eight oh seven eighty-seventh Lane. I think that's the one that'll be taken care of later, maybe more practice there probably. And then, two other quick things. One is, the Department of Defense is starting a program, or has a program, for Vietnam War Commemoration. And one of the things that we can do as a community is we can step up and be a commemorative partner with the Vietnam War Commemoration, and it's very, considering everything we already do, it would be very minimal effort, and, and it would allow us to recognize those, those vets individually. Create a Vietnam War Commemoration Committee with at least three individuals, complete commemorative partner program application, complete a statement of understanding, and once approved, the city will receive a started kit with the official commemorative flag and a certificate. And the program encourages a formal presentation of the flag and certificate in a ceremony where all are invited and Vietnam veterans are recognized. And there must be two events each year. Well, between our Memorial Day things, and our T-Up for the troops, and our Armed Forces Day in May, I mean, we've already got three events for the vets, we could just recognize the Vietnam vets also. It just seems like something that would be good for us to do. So I'd be looking for a couple others to serve on that with me, and let me know afterwards. And then the last thing I've got is, the Coon Rapids High School has their Cinderella play, and I would encourage you to get out and see it. It's really worth it. It's very, very good. This weekend coming up will be the last weekend, whatever those dates are, the eighth or something. Ms. DeGrand.
Just a reminder that the home remodeling tour is going to be taking place on Sunday, May fifteenth, noon to four, and it's showcasing six of the houses that went through the Home for Generations II program this past year. So it's a great opportunity to get out, see what kind of remodeling is taking place in the community, and get excited and motivated about doing other remodeling for this year.
Is there a map for that on the city website?
Yeah, a copy of the, the flyer that was mailed out to everybody about a week or two ago, has individual maps for each individual property that's on the home tour. And then once, when you go to the first house on that day, you'll get a citywide map that shows where all the houses are in relation to the one that you started that.
Perfect. Okay, nice.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city is sponsoring the annual Rebees Clinic this Saturday, the seventh, from one to three, at Fire Station One, Two, and Three. If you have questions, there's a feature story on the website, or you can call the clerk's office, and we'll help you with the info on that.
Do you have to get Rebees shots for chickens?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Stemwell?
Recently, a former, former city manager, Bob Thistle, made me aware of the fact that another former city manager, Bob Pulcher, recently passed away. And Bob Pulcher was the city manager from nineteen sixty to sixty-seven, apparently was rather instrumental in getting the Bunker Hills project done, amongst other things. He went on to be the CEO and president of Springstead Incorporated, which we're all familiar with here. So just thought it was worthwhile bringing that up and recognizing Bob Pulcher's efforts here.
Excellent. Any other business? Ms. Hammer. One more time, Mr. Mayor, May fourteenth, Saturday, ten to noon, Public Works Open House. All right. And, Mr. Anderson, the weather's getting nice.
Mayor, council, we're in full bloom and, and ready for everyone to come on out and enjoy.
That would be at Bunker Hills?
That's at Bunker Hills, thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
All right. Any other business? Oh, no, Jerry. All by Johnson, second, by Demmer, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned. Adjourned.